All right, we'll get started this morning with an invocation from Pastor Josh Kincaid of Memorial Road Church of Christ. And then followed by that, how about a pledge of allegiance from the happiest person on the horseshoe this morning that she didn't have to go vote for herself today. Councilwoman Meg Salyer.
Let's pray. God of the universe and of each city, we're thankful for this gathering to seek the good of this city, of this whole city, areas full of construction and excitement and areas that may have seen better days, neighborhoods that get lots of attention and neighborhoods that many have forgotten, districts we know by name and many we don't yet. I'm thankful for the leaders in this room who have a vision for our whole city. Would you give them wisdom today? I'm also thankful for all those who work behind the scenes to keep our city safe, keep the trash picked up, salt the roads, fill the potholes, those who work with permits and easements and in risk management and payroll, construction and change orders, building, maintenance and cleaning. Would you give them encouragement today? So for all those who work on all levels to keep this city healthy, we are thankful. May all residents benefit from this work. We give you thanks this day for the blessings of life. Grant us the strength we need to love you and love our neighbors. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, religious saints, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order. And we have a couple items under Office of the Mayor, item three on your agenda. And so I'll make my way to the front to make those presentations. All right, why don't we start with our Teacher of the Month, Matt Hall. There's Matt. Come on up. We try to, there are 24 school districts in the city limits, and we try to spread this around as much as we can in the 12 months of the year. And you come to us today from Oakdale, one of our 24 in northeast Oklahoma City in Ward 7. And why don't we learn a little bit more about you? I will ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Matt Hall has been named Teacher of the Month for February 2019 by the Oakdale School Foundation and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Matt is in his 25th year of teaching and was previously named Teacher of the Year by two other metro school districts. And whereas Matt is an outstanding middle school math teacher at Oakdale School, his students are engaged and clear about classroom expectations, and he creatively captures students' attention with age-appropriate humor and life-applicable math lessons. Whereas Matt maintains a good connection to his students through high expectations and appropriate praise for students' efforts and achievements. Matt is truly a mastery-level teacher that cares for his students. Whereas Matt takes on many responsibilities at Oakdale School in addition to teaching, including bus driver and coaching duties for all Oakdale School sports activities. Whereas Matt volunteers countless hours helping his own students, his former students, his future students, and anyone else with math and with life. Whereas Matt loves his family, practices his faith, and honors his profession. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Matt Hall on his selection as the February 2019 Teacher of the Month by the Oakdale School Foundation and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Well, thank you, Matt. We obviously have so much gratitude for the teachers of Oklahoma City who teach our kids. Thank you for your service. We would like to vote on this resolution. And Councilwoman Nice, Oakdale is in Ward 7, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, and I want to thank you for 25 years of service. This is awesome. Thank you for what you do. Please, let's move this item.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Teacher of the Month. Would you like to say a few words? Some age-appropriate humor perhaps?
I was just hoping there's some thunder tickets in here. No, I'll make this, I'll make this short because I've got to get back to the second hour to teach, but thank you for this recognition. I appreciate it. And thank you to the administration, teachers and kids at Oakdale who make public school teaching such a fun and rewarding job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Matt one more time. All right, we've got one more resolution. Why don't we bring up our Safety Stars for this month, or this quarter I should say. Come on up. I have said before that I can't imagine an entity that does more different things than the city of Oklahoma City. And a lot of those things can be dangerous. And so we, we work really hard, you know, to emphasize safety. And that's why every quarter we, we bring up some city employees who have exemplified that pursuit. And this month, we have five employees that we'd like to honor. And to learn a little bit more about their story and their emphasis on safety, why I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Thomas Jennings, Charles Cox, Todd Byrd, James Irwin and Aubrey Atherton are employees in the Solid Waste Division of the Utilities Department. Whereas on September 19th, 2018, refuse equipment operator Thomas Jennings and refuse collector Two Charles Cox were collecting bulky waste in the 2300 block of South Walnut. Whereas while Thomas Jennings and Charles Cox were removing a hollow tree trunk, a hive of approximately 100,000 bees swarmed the men, causing multiple bee stings. Whereas both gentlemen retreated to their cabs for safety and contacted their supervisors, Todd Byrd and James Irwin, to assist them. Whereas management specialist Aubrey Atherton quickly researched available resources and contacted a beekeeper to assist the ensnared Thomas and Charles. Whereas Thomas and Charles performed in an exemplary manner to safely relocate the beehive with the guidance from the beekeeper, thus preserving the desirable hive. Whereas Thomas, Charles, Todd, James and Aubrey have contributed to the safety of coworkers and the neighborhood through their collective actions and collaborative efforts. Whereas Thomas, Charles, Todd, James and Aubrey were selected by the City of Oklahoma City Safety Advisory Recognition Subcommittee as the most deserving employees for the Quarterly Safety Star Award. Whereas this council desires to recognize Thomas Jennings, Charles Cox, Todd Byrd, James Irwin and Aubrey Atherton for their dedication, professionalism and commitment to workplace safety within the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Thomas, Charles, Todd, James and Aubrey, Second Quarter 2019 City of Oklahoma City Quarterly Safety Stars.
Very good. That is a heck of a story. I will say, if you thought that was good, Jim Lynn told it even better in my office earlier this morning. But I, some of you may remember this when it happened. It was in the news. I sent you guys texts that day. And we're just so grateful you're okay. And you even saved the bees, which seemed, you know, kind of above and beyond really. But thank you for your commitment to getting that done right, doing the job right and keeping yourselves safe and keeping the neighborhood safe as well. With that, this is a resolution, so we would love to maybe entertain a motion.
I would like, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to just say thank you to our new beekeepers of the city of Oklahoma City. And I will second his motion.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Safety Stars of the quarter. Let's hear it for them real quick. And earlier, we had to decide who is going to speak, and Charles was nominated by his fellow Safety Stars. So would you like to say a few words on behalf of the group?
I would just like to thank everybody. We'd like to thank the city for the help and the support. I'd also like to thank my supervisors, Todd Byrd, and I'd like to thank James Irwin and Mr. Jennings. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let's hear it for them one more time. Brings us to item four, Journal of Council Proceedings, items A and B. We could take it with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to item five, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, on page 19 on 9B, this is PUD, let's see it here, PUD 1694. This is actually being deferred at the request of the applicant.
And is my understanding, it is possible that someone might have come here to speak on this item, in which case we want to honor that. Is there anyone here who came to speak on item 9B? This is regarding PUD 1694 at 9700 North West Expressway. It's on page 19 of the printed agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on then.
All right, on page 20, on item 9E1, these, I'm sorry, on page 20 on item 9E1, all these items are under 9E1, and we're going to ask to strike these items. The first one is item E, 1628 Northwest 7th Street, that is to re-notify the owner. Item F, 1331 Northwest 8th Street is the owner has secured. Item I, 215 Southeast 41st Street, the owner has secured. And then on item XF, I mean, I'm sorry, 9F1F, 215 Southeast 41st Street, we're going to strike this item because the owner has secured. And that's all items I have.
All right, we will continue, we will consider those uncontested. All right, item six, revocable permits. We've got item 6A, this is a joint revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and the University of Oklahoma Cycling Club to hold the Land Rendez. Is that, I don't know. If there's someone here, they'll be able to correct me on that. 2019 on March 9th. And it looks like we do have some people who've signed up to speak, Harrison Peter and Jared Johnson.
Hi, my name is Harrison Petrie, and this is Jared Johnson again. And we're with OU Cycling Club, and we're going to be holding a race around Draper Lake. So it's going to be in the recreational area, number two, kind of start the race. It's a bicycle race that goes clockwise around the lake. So it's anywhere from 27 miles to 63 miles.
Depending on the category. We've coordinated with the Parks Department and the Police Department, and we're not planning on shutting any roads like, except, with the exception of Douglas and the entrance to the recreational area, that will be shut down. Now, in the original document that you have, it wasn't planned to be shut down, but at the advice of some of the people that have held races in the past, it was suggested that we do shut that down for the finish line. But we have coordinated those changes with the Parks Department and the Police Department, and they said that we didn't need to make any changes to the stuff that we submitted to you guys.
It's not a full road closure or anything, it's just a temporary road closure for like an hour or so.
Great. And what's it called?
The Land Rendez.
The Land Rendez, okay.
It's kind of like a play on words, like land run.
Yep, yep, got it, got it. Very good. Councilman Stone?
Move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great race. 6B, revocable permit with Infant Crisis Services for the Infant Crisis Services 5K and One Mile Fun Run on March 30th. No one has signed up to speak, but it looks like someone is here to comment on this. Come up and say your name and address real quick.
Hi, sure. Good morning. My name and address?
Yes, please.
Allison Parker from Infant Crisis Services, 4224 North Lincoln Boulevard. We're a local nonprofit that helps feed and diaper babies and toddlers, and we are working to secure a permit for our first annual 5K and One Mile Fun Run, which will take place at Wheeler Park along the River Trail, so not by the Ferris wheel. We're working with our teen associate board to plan this for the first time. It'll take place March 30th at 8:00 AM for the 5K and 9:00 AM for the One Mile Race. And we have secured a race timing company, DG Race, Road Race Productions, to help us time and measure the race. We've secured IMSA and other police officers with Sergeant Stephen Johnson. We've worked with him to do that. We hope to have 300, 350 people. It's our first one, so we'll see. And all the money raised for that will go towards Infant Crisis Services' mission, so.
Congratulations on a really successful Boots and Ball Gowns Saturday.
Oh, thank you.
That was just wonderful.
We're pretty much recovered by now.
Yeah. It takes a full cycle, full week's cycle to recover from those. I would move approval of the event.
Thank you.
We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 6C, revocable right-of-way use permit with DG Productions to hold Run Lucky 5K and Mission Mile Fun Run on March 10th, West Park Place between North Walker and North Hudson. And we do have Rick here to speak.
Rick Ailing.
Yeah.
833 Northwest 41st. Thank you, Mayor. This is our ninth year for Run Lucky. Our race starts right behind Fassler Hall and runs through the beautiful historic neighborhoods, Mesa Park, Heritage Hills, and then winds up back at behind Fassler Hall. We typically have about 1,000 entrants or more running this race, and our race is a fundraiser for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. That's at runlucky.com. We also have a snooze lucky if you don't want to run, but you still want the T-shirt in the middle.
Very good. Councilwoman Salyer.
Yeah, it's a great event. Thank you very much. Move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event. I had a personal conflict on 6D, and our charter requires you to vote if you're even in the room. So I'm going to step out and turn the chair over to Vice Mayor Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is item 6D. It's a revocable right-of-way use permit with McNeely's Group LLC to hold the McNeely St. Patrick's Day Block Party, March 17th. And I believe someone's here to speak on this. Emily? Oh, there you are. How are you?
Good. How are y'all? This is our 10th year of doing our St. Patrick's Day Block Party. We also just celebrated our 10th anniversary last summer. So we're pretty excited to continue doing business in Midtown Oklahoma City. We're blocking off basically half the block completely between Park Place and 11th. It's just that south end, there's still access to the alleys so that Cafe Do Brasil can still go about their daily business and be able to get in and out of their property easily. But other than that, we have a DJ and a band, and we're planning, really hoping, fingers crossed, to have lovely, lovely weather on Sunday.
Sounds like a fun event. Meg?
Great, sure, I would make a motion to approve this. And my office is very disappointed that it's on Sunday because they love going to that event. But I also wanted to encourage everybody to take the trolley to get there. It stops right in front, and you can do that whole loop downtown. So everybody come out and everybody take the trolley. Move approval.
All those in favor, let's see. Yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 6E, revocable right-of-way use permit with Oklahoma Family Center for Autism to hold the Autism Oklahoma Peace Walk in 5K. And we do have someone who signed up to speak, Crystal Frost.
Hi.
Go ahead.
So this is our 11th year to hold the, our actual name now is Autism Oklahoma instead of Family Center for Autism, Oklahoma Family Center for Autism. But this is our 11th year down at the ballpark. We have about 8,000 people that come out. It's a walk and a 5K. And we encourage everybody to come out. All of the funds go towards funding for autism communities, support groups, that sort of thing in our state. So it's peacewalk.org as in puzzle piece, so.
Cool. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, just want to say thank you for having this for 11 years now. So this is obviously something meaningful to the community, and we hope we have more participants this year. And I ask that we move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event. 6F, revocable right-of-way use permit with Red Bud Foundation to hold the Red Bud Classic on April 6th and 7th. And we have Sarah Sweet signed up to speak.
Hi, good morning, council members. So the Red Bud Classic is a cycling and running event that is held in the cities of Oklahoma City, Jones, Choctaw and Nichols Hills. This will be our 37th event on April 6th and 7th. We do the cycling and a kid's fun run on Saturday, and then a 5K, 10K and two-mile walk and fun run on Sunday. And we have sent, notified, there's some road closures on Northwest 63rd, and we've notified the residents in that area. That was done in January.
Okay. Councilwoman Nice? Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event. All right, that concludes item six. We will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A, B, C, D and E. We do not, as far as we are aware, can we need an executive session on item D? We could take all of these items as one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Here we have items A, B, C and D, but item C needs a separate vote on the record to go into an executive session that we will hold at the end of our other council business. So why don't I take a motion for A, B and D?
Move A, B and D.
All right, motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then a motion for C.
Item C in the executive session.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Passes unanimously. We will recess OC PPA, not adjourn. We are only recessing so that we may hold that executive session later. Okay, moving on to our convening as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A, B and C, which we can take with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on item seven, the consent docket. I hope everybody's listening to Councilwoman Salyer's motions on that because she's our go-to on that motion. That duty is going to be up for grabs soon, so. We had a motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
All right. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull out? I don't believe we have any presentations, correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I was asked Eric if he might give us a brief update on 7Q. That's the landscaping, a portion of the landscaping contract on the Boulevard, and I thought we might just get a little update on where we are.
Okay, is there anything else?
7M.
N?
M.
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 Got it. Okay, anything else?
7Z.
7Z. Okay, anything else? All right, well, we'll take them in order. That brings us to 7M. This is a resolution approving the expenditure of $50,000, cover the city's share of the costs incurred by the Oklahoma City Redevelopment Authority, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to make sure that we, want to thank, first of all, the staff for putting together this Innovation District plan and the strategic development meetings that we had. But obviously, there were some expenditures that were reported before I came to office. And with that, we did ask for two additional workshops because our first workshop only brought about less than 75 people. And I think if we're talking about a district, in a whole innovation district, it's meaningful to have more people and more input than 75 when you're wanting to make sure you have decisions that are being made to fit everyone. So I did want someone to speak about as far as those other two meetings and what we were looking at as far as those additional costs. Thank you.
So we've got Aubrey McDermott, Planning Director.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, for, part of the Innovation District plan included looking at the adjacent neighborhoods and planned growth in the area and how it might impact adjacent neighborhoods. So part of the project was to interact with our residents in the district and talk about future land use and growth and assets within the community. So after the first public meeting, which was originally planned to be the only public meeting, and we didn't see the desirable outcome, we decided that having, hosting two additional meetings would be necessary, one on a weeknight evening and one on a weekend, so that we could make sure we could get as many people as possible. Those two meetings ended up drawing several hundred more responses, people who came in person and people who filled out and submitted surveys to the city. So the outcome of that, I think, was that everyone had a consistent process. They had three separate opportunities to come, learn about the project and provide feedback to our consultants who are working on the plan. And I think that that's valuable feedback for the consultants to take forward and provide some good recommendations for the neighborhoods.
And with that, again, we were able to make sure we got a lot more feedback. I think, you know, when we're looking at what the Innovation District could possibly bring, and we're looking at those different areas, again, it's important that not only those businesses are a part of the conversation, but it was important to reach out to more of the residents within it to make sure that they were a part of the conversation as well. There obviously was a cost to it, and that's, again, why I wanted to make sure all our Ts were crossed and our Is were dotted when it came to a cost such as this, to make sure that.
Yeah, and the additional costs tied back to the consultants' travel time. We had multiple consultants that were there that could handle any size group that we would have had. And so it was associated with that. But again, it was so that we could meet that need of having the additional outreach. So appreciate the prompting for us to do that, and then we went ahead and managed the contract on that.
And with that being said, I'm hoping we can just approve this so we can make sure that input gets with the rest of the community and continue to have the conversation even beyond those meetings that we had.
Craig, the travel costs were $23,000?
It was the travel costs, I think there were five consultants that we had in total. And it was travel costs, it was preparation time, it was the management of the event, and then the analysis of the data afterwards. So it was all the costs associated with the additional input that we received. And it was part of what was already in the contract of, if there were additional services, it was built into the contract what additional services would cost.
With the consultant?
Yes.
Okay. So it's an add-on to the contract?
That's correct.
Not necessarily paying for a workshop? This is the first time I remember paying for a workshop.
But it's, it was add-on to the consultant's services. And that was something we wanted to clarify too, that Councilwoman Nice and Janice Powers had also, Planning Commission Chairman, had asked for additional meetings to get the input. They did not direct the cost, they didn't manage the contract, they just asked for the additional input. We managed that process because we wanted to ensure that the process that we had in the initial meeting was carried out in those following meetings, that it didn't get shorted. And so it required additional travel time for them to travel, for them to be back here, and additional work that was associated with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Anything else on that item? All right, then item Q. Councilwoman Salyer.
As I said, this is part of a landscaping package for the Oklahoma City Boulevard. And I thought, having driven by Western the other day and seeing an awful lot of work going on, that this might be a good time to just get a minute or two update from Eric on where we are in the completion of the Boulevard project.
Sure, there's a lot of work that's occurring on the Oklahoma City Boulevard. There's, of course, the sections that have been open to traffic, which are east of EK Gaylord and west of Western. But the center portion remains under construction, and there's a lot of work that's underway. The item that's on the council today is actually Phase 1 of the landscaping, which is work to be provided by the city of Oklahoma City. So the work that's being done on the Boulevard, just as a reminder, is actually being done by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. If you were to drive the Boulevard today, you're going to see that they are starting to put in some of the amenity zone improvements, and so you're going to see those spaces for the trees. The tree wells are present on several sections, but that's in the center portion. This today is actually the landscaping of the completed east and west sections, again, bringing a plan forward that's going to be consistent in providing that gateway to downtown Oklahoma City. So work on this with council's approval today would be contracted with Wind Construction. The total contract for both ends is $1.7 million. These funds were previously set aside for this project for us to proceed. There is a phase There is a Phase Two landscaping package that will bid in April. We'll be bringing that back, and that'll be for that center portion, with the goal being that when the Boulevard actually finishes this summer, summer of 2019, that the landscaping can immediately proceed and hopefully be underway well by this year to have the entire project complete here in the next, say, 10 to 12 months. Welcome.
Okay. We had one more item Z. Councilman Stonecypher.
Thank you, honor. This is a joint resolution to accept permanent and temporary easements. And while I realize that isn't too monumental or too exciting that we're accepting easements, this is the beginning process for a road widening project that's on North MacArthur Avenue between 150th and 164th. And the reason I mention that is because there's been a tremendous amount of residential and commercial development out there, and I know the people that live out there are really excited about this project. So, thank you.
All right. Is there anything else that anybody decided they might want to speak on? If not, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent docket? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to the concurrence docket on page 16 of your printed agenda, items eight. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out? I didn't hear a second. Got a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to items nine, items requiring separate votes, page 18 of your printed agenda. We'll start with some planning cases. We've got item 9A1. These are all, the next few here are all ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval from the Planning Commission. This is 10016 Southwest 29th Street, moving from AA agricultural to RA, single-family rural residential. Councilman Mcatee.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? If you would, just take a very few moments and give the council an overview of what's involved here. This is at the epicenter of a lot of development work out in this area of the town. So, if you would, Tim, give us an overview.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates. This is a piece of ground that is zoned AA, but it doesn't, it's not five acres, so you can't build a house on it. So, we came in and resounded it through Planning Commission as RA, which allows for a single home to be built here. And that's the intent of the owner. It's this piece right here. So, it was on the consent docket. Planning Commission was approved unanimously. I'd be happy to answer your questions. And the owner is here, too.
It's on Southwest 29th. There's a considerable amount of traffic on there right now, but one house is not gonna sink the ship. And there's gonna be a turnpike in the area and some road improvements going on there, so it's an exciting area. Has anybody signed up to? Seeing there's no protests, unless you have any questions, I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. And also...
Yes, we had asked for the emergency on this. There were some delays in the process. It was really on our part that we had missed getting it on the agenda, and so it ended up resulting in delays of about a month. So, we had asked to have this one on as an emergency, just to make up for that time that it wasn't the part of the applicant. It was on our part that it delayed.
So, that's a separate vote, but I just kinda wanted to alert you to that before we cast this first vote.
I'll comment it after we vote.
Okay, very good. So, we've got a motion and a second on the table for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Councilman Mcatee for the emergency issue.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we got into the habit on the council of approving almost everything for an emergency. We set up some process and a procedure to limit the number of emergencies that get brought. This one is on us and not on the applicant, so in order to make the applicant whole, I move for approval of the emergency.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, and this requires seven votes. Affirmative votes, yes. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one, with the sufficient number of votes.
Thank you very much.
Emergency passes. Okay. That brings us to 9A2, 8420 South Shields Boulevard, moving from SPUD 490 to RMH2, Manufactured Mobile Home Park District. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this? I'd go ahead and move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A3, at 2424 South Mustang Road, moving from AA to PUD 1703. Councilman Mcatee.
Is the applicant present? This is an interesting project. There's a golf course out there, a lot of development going on. If you would, give the council just a brief overview of what you intend to do.
Yes, sir. My name is Hugh Jarrett. I'm here with the applicant. This is, we have an existing apartment complex there, the links Mustang Creek. This is a landlocked piece between the Kilpatrick Extension and our existing development. So, we're gonna increase our golf course and add roughly about 360 more apartment units between our existing development and the Kilpatrick Extension.
How many holes did you have on the property for golf?
There's nine right now. Mr. Lindsey has been, Mr. Lindsey designs our courses. He's been tinkering around with how he's gonna expand the golf course into this property if we are approved. So, it could, could expand from none.
Has anybody signed up to protest?
No, sir.
Seeing none, unless the council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9A4. This is at 1111 Northeast 63rd Street, moving from R1 to SPUD 1093. Councilwoman Nice, and by the way, so you know, we have four people who've signed up to speak.
What we'd like to do first, let's have, I know we have the attorney for the applicant.
David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Yes, ma'am.
If you would, just kinda give overview of what the applicant is requesting.
Sure. So, what we have is an SPUD along 63rd Street, east of Kelly Avenue. The SPUD is a two-use SPUD. It would allow office and retail. Retail further limited to a medical marijuana dispensary. It is clearly spelled out within the SPUD document. We went to Planning Commission, in which there was no protest. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this item unanimously. Subsequent to Planning Commission, the notice for city council went out. It was slightly different than the notice that went out for Planning Commission, and once the neighbors were alerted that it would be a medical marijuana facility, protests started rolling in. You'll see in your packet that you have several, several letters, most of which, all of which, I believe, except for one, are outside of the legal protest area. And almost all of it is regarding the medical marijuana use. It is my opinion that once the voters of Oklahoma pass the state question legalizing medical marijuana, municipalities are no longer in a position to cast judgment on that use. I believe the council has to look at this as if it were a specialty retail shop. In so doing, I believe your staff report is instructive. The staff did recommend approval. And of note, on page two of 12 of the staff report that went to Planning Commission, you'll note that part of the reason they did that is, and I quote, "Commercially-zoned land is located at the corner of Northeast 63rd and North Kelly, and along 63rd Street are facilities, including Coles Garden, the National Guard Training Facility, a motel, and other commercial and office uses." So, in terms of the use categories we have in this spud, they squarely fit within the area. They're squarely within the comprehensive plan, and that is why staff recommended approval and largely why the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. I would submit to this council that the nature of the medical marijuana use is the only reason that there's protests, and I think it's fairly clear in the fact that there was no protest at Planning Commission. It was only until the words "medical marijuana dispensary" appeared in a notice that protests rolled in. So, I would submit that this application conforms to all of the things that this council is required to consider when hearing a zoning case, and we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. With that being said, we also want to make sure we hear from the neighborhood. So, we did, I went to the Neighborhood Association meeting last night, myself, as well as staff and attorneys, and we appreciate them for staying with us late in the evening to be a part of the conversation. So, we want to hear from the community and the residents that live within that neighborhood, because obviously, they have different feelings about what could possibly come to their area.
Okay, you want me to call them up? We've got Mary Overall. Ms. Overall, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I'm Mary Overall, and I'm here to express my concerns regarding this spud 1093. I've lived in, my husband and I have lived in the community since 1978. Our address is 1111 Northeast 64th, and we butt up against the property that is in question. We connect within 300 feet from the site of the spud 1093, and it's requesting, obviously, to transition from single-family dwelling to a law office and a medical marijuana dispensary. There are several areas of concern that my husband and I have and the neighbors surrounding us, and they're in four categories. The security concerns, the safety concerns, marketing and advertising, and a decrease in the livability within our community, and I want to address each one of those briefly and specifically. Regarding the safety concerns, we're concerned that it will change and change our neighborhood or our community and create a magnet for increase in property crime. There definitely will be more strangers wandering around in the neighborhood. There will be a concentration of individuals around this dispensary, creating congestion in the immediate area. And the property now has limited ingress and egress to and from the site. And there's also limited parking in that specific area around the house that they have designated. There is a potential increase in the use of our personal driveway, and the driveway that we utilize is one that we pave and maintain ourselves. The third, the second area of concern is that of security. The proposed hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, increasing the likelihood of traffic flow in and around our property, and particularly, the heavy traffic corridor of Northeast 63rd. Again, there's the potential wandering of strangers around our home, increasing the potential for additional criminal activity. Will certainly place a burden on the Spring Lake Division of the Oklahoma City Police Department and other city utility resources. We're concerned from a marketing and an advertising perspective. Unattractive billboards and signage advertising marijuana sales will be a deterrent to the general public continuing to visit the current resources, the beautiful historic resources that we have within our community, such as the Coles Garden, Gabriella's Restaurant, and the historic National Western Museum and Cowboy Hall of Fame. These treasures have visitors from all across the nation and the world. The third, fourth area that we're concerned about is that of decrease in the livability of our community. We have fought very hard for, and the city has invested large sums of money improving the Adventure District to make our community more attractive, livable, and also walkable for individuals and family, to make it family-friendly. We've had sidewalks installed, which cost the city millions of dollars. And of course, a medical marijuana dispensary will certainly limit and prohibit and be a deterrent for us utilizing the sidewalk in front of that home. We were named the Neighborhood of the Year in 2015, and will continue to uphold the same values that made us eligible and the recipient of this magnificent award. We do not want to lose the sense of community that we subscribe to and held for decades. Within blocks of the proposed site for the dispensary is a historic, again, National Western Museum and Cowboy Hall of Fame, Coles Garden, Gabriella's Restaurant, and all have high utilization. There's also the Science Museum and the Oklahoma City Zoo that's in close proximity. A dispensary with signage advertising a marijuana dispensary will certainly be a deterrent to utilization of these lucrative and important businesses and resources that we have in and adjacent to our community. I personally don't want to use as a landmark the medical marijuana dispensary when directing individuals to my home and to the areas within the neighborhood. Lastly, the property owner, Mr. Moody, discussed with the surrounding individual, the neighbors within the area, that he wanted to put a law office there. We had minimal to no objections to a law office. That was the first spud that was submitted. Within a month of that spud, we got another notice that there was going to be a law office and a medical marijuana dispensary. Somewhat deceptive in our thinking that we had one spud, and then we had, on the heels of that, we have another with a different purpose and description of what was going to occur. In summary, we're at risk for transforming our consistent and our current neighborhood from a livable community to one that engenders fear as we walk along our sidewalks, a lot more traffic to contend with, a magnet for crime, unfavorable signage, and the list continues from a negative perspective and potential impact. As part of the Adventure District, our community has a stellar reputation as a culturally diverse neighborhood, community, and public space that is virtually crime-free. It's a historical, stable, a community that promotes health, wellness, happiness, and well-being. We don't want to lose those values, and we ask that you disapprove this request for spud 1093 for a medical marijuana dispensary in our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike Skinner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Skinner, 6532 North Lottie, Oklahoma City. And I'll just have a quick summary to speak specifically to Mr. Box's comments, and then be followed by Mr. Gene Allen and Cheryl Allen, members of the neighborhood built there in 1960. Couple of points. We, as a neighborhood, and I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association, main point is I've relearned President Reagan's thoughts of trust to verify. Not being at the Planning Commission, that's on, the brand-new president got schooled in public administration. And I'm sad to say a graduate of the OU School of Political Science in 2005 with a master's. So, I've learned. Number two, we, as a neighborhood, oppose commercialization on the north side of Northeast 63rd for a couple of reasons. It doesn't directly significantly affect the neighborhood. No problems on the south side, as Mr. Box mentioned. All of those, except Coles Gardens, are on the south side of 63rd. As I look at this, on the, to the left, which would be to the west, Kelly and Northeast 63rd, vacant commercial property, perfect ingress and egress. We're a community that, second generation like me, are coming back to the neighborhood. We're beginning to walk our grandchildren through. I'm a couple of years from Social Security. I learned how to ride a bicycle in the 60s on Lottie, which is that main line just, just over that residential area. Learned how to drive a car down Lottie. Watched my kids do the same, and recently did that with my six-year-old. So, it is a neighborhood with a history since 1945. Commercial opportunities not on the north side. We would like to keep the neighborhood intact. Obviously, as Ms. Overall mentioned, we have concerns with the medical marijuana. That said, it's in the neighborhood. We're an aging community. We're not opposed to anyone seeking any legal redress to help themselves medically. It's just there's much better locations on the other side. We are a neighborhood rich in history since 1945. We have, as I counted behind me, about 15 to 20 here today. Many are at the doctor because they are aged, they would be. We had about 25 last night. We're a neighborhood of about 60 homes. Finally, I appreciate the city attorney staff being here last night. I'll give you a math problem, which to me is interesting. Within the 300-foot radius, myself and I, Susan, are about 550 feet. Within that 300-foot radius, two homeowners. One's the applicant, one you just heard from. To me, that's 100% opposition to the applicant in the protest. We're a neighborhood of anchorages. We appreciate Oklahoma City. They brought us city water in the 60s, septic systems, basically, in this system. We supported Oklahoma City when they approved Coles Garden as a museum. It turned into a commercial venue. It's, it's a part of Oklahoma City that every word would be proud to have. With that, sir, I think you'll see Mr. With that, sir, I think you'll see Mr. Gene Allen and Ms. Cheryl Allen talk about the history, Mr. Allen, of how we've worked with the city before, and Ms. Cheryl, Mrs. Allen, to speak to, if you will, the spirit.
Thank you. Gene Allen?
I'm from the Neighborhood Association, and we're here to help you. As you know probably, we've been here a number of times over the years, quite a few actually, and our request has always been the same thing. Help us to preserve the approaches to the National Cowboy Hall of Fame and the Western Heritage Center, which, as you know, is the most attended of any of these most attended and of any of these in the state of Oklahoma. You've probably driven down Northeast 63rd Street, go into the Cowboy Hall on many occasions. You may have noticed that there is no commercial development on the north side of that street. Now, that's a crucial point here. There are two legacy businesses on the south side. They've been there a long time. There used to be more. We were trying to keep that street with that same sort of community feel. Now, I know we're only talking about one little lawyer's office. Well, actually, that's not quite true. Somewhere in there, we got a magical marijuana dispensary. The neighborhood is not real clear how that happened. We were told that there was some misunderstanding. I don't believe in unicorns either. But never mind. If you approve this request, you'll be taking the first step toward commercializing the whole side of this street. And once you take that step, as you very well know, there's no going back. If you approve this request, the next sound you hear will be from the next neighbor who will say you proved it for him. Prove it for me. And you will not be able to say no. We've seen that all over Oklahoma City and most other cities. The first step is crucial, and we're asking, all of the things aside, don't take the first step to commercializing this. You cannot go back. Now, previous council members have seen the wisdom of this request and have, for the most part, gone along with it. What we're asking you is that you might consider their wisdom and apply it to your own situation, your own thinking. One of these days, your grandchildren are going to ask you to take them to the Cowboy Hall, and you're going to make that turn off of Kelly and start down Northeast 63rd, and you're going to see the marijuana dispensary, and you're going to see the liquor store, and you're going to see the bingo parlor. And they may ask you, "Granddaddy, Grandma, what is all this stuff?" We don't want you to have to say, "Well, I voted for it." Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Strickland Allen?
Good morning, everyone. I hope you can hear me better than we could hear him. We had a tough time, so I just wanted to let you know that there are other considerations, and I want to make sure that you hear every one of them. Yes, we don't like CBD in our neighborhood. No, we don't want to have strangers going down our street when our children are out there, our grandchildren are out there playing. We don't want to worry that we have to keep an eye on them every single second because we don't know who these people are. They're coming down. I want to make sure that you hear about neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are cohesive, not the kind of neighborhoods where some planner put down every single house that looks exactly alike and 10 feet apart. Our neighborhood has been there since the 1935s. Some of the people that live in our neighborhood are grandchildren of those early settlers. We're not new people here. We're old people that come to stay. We don't move around. We don't want to continue to have to keep looking for a new place. We want to keep our neighborhood safe. Yes, absolutely. Our grandchildren play. We don't want to worry about them. Now, I want to give you some ideas of what we're talking about. No, we don't want to have CBD, but we also don't want to have commercialism in our neighborhood either, as my husband just said. When you start that way, you can hardly stop it. It's like taking a jump off of a cliff. You can't stop that jump once you start it. We don't want to have it go any further than where it is now. We wanted to also make sure that you knew what we have already learned ourselves, that security is not just how many policemen you have on the force. It has to do with your neighbors. Who knows you? Who knows when there's something the matter with your house, with your children? I want to give you some examples. In our neighborhood, we know each other. We have our first names memorized, and on my speed dial, I have the numbers of several of my neighbors. When we have a police or a fire truck show up, there are text messages on my phone to say, "Who's that? What's going on?" You don't get that in other neighborhoods, and you won't, because that continues to develop in a way that we just can't abide. We like our neighborhood. I have a good friend who's the wife of an FBI agent. Now, she told me this, and it made me stop to think. She said, "You know, your security is not how many policemen you have that are watching your neighborhood, and by the way, they're stretched thin, so that might not happen anyway." But what she said was, "It's your neighbors. If you have good neighbors, you don't need an ADT system. You don't need any security system. Your neighborhood is going to be watched 24/7 by your neighbors. That's your security." There's no police force or fire department in the country that can watch every single house in a neighborhood, not a single one. We don't have that problem. We don't have to worry that Spring Lake Division is stretched beyond their limits. We don't have to worry about that. We have neighbors that know us. When my husband had his hip fracture, there was a policeman and a fire truck at our door. We had people coming from everywhere to say, "What's going on? How can we help?" When we had a little four-year-old boy show up at our front door, we knew exactly who he was. We knew exactly why he was there. His father had worked a night shift. He was a medical intern, and he'd fallen asleep, and this little four-year-old didn't know where to go. He came to our door. We knew exactly who he was, and I called his father and woke him up. We have people from across the way that are grandchildren and grandparents. Those little grandchildren were told by their grandmother, who was sick. She said, "Now, if anything happens to me, you go over to Cheryl Strickland Allen's house and Gene Allen's house." Unfortunately, she did die. The children were not with her, but if they had been, they would have been with us. We have a neighbor whose grass got long because his lawnmower broke down. He doesn't know who cut his grass. He just came home one day, and it was cut. I don't know who cut his grass either, but I do know that the neighbors are likely to do something like that. You aren't going to see that in every neighborhood. And just to make sure you know, when a new family shows up in your new city of Oklahoma City to them, they're looking for a neighborhood like our neighborhood. They don't want the kind that has the cookie-cutter houses everywhere and the swimming pool that everybody uses but nobody goes to. They want that kind of neighborhood that, since the 1935s, has been the caring, neighbor-to-neighbor situation that we have. We want every one of you to know that. We wish every one of you had a neighborhood just like ours, and we don't want to make anything happen to it to change it. So we're asking you to please turn down this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we've got maybe a comment right off the bat. That does conclude the people who signed up to speak.
May I ask a question to the homeowners first, and then to David second? So, your concern is the commercialization of this area and not necessarily what's being proposed in terms of what type of retail? You just don't want any type of retail, whether it's a convenience store, a CVS, anything like that?
Correct, sir. I'm Mike Skinner, it's the Neighborhood Association president. Yes, for the past few years, yes, I think that's it. Number one, commercialization north, the north side of Northeast 63rd. Number two, we have several studies. Ms. Overall helped us. Ohio State University, Denver, Colorado, founded a three-year study. There is increased property crime around these dispensaries. We've seen it. Primarily, sir, you're spot on. Commercialization north of 63rd.
Well, I don't think we can address that issue about additional crime specifically to this type of business. It's the issue of commercialization or non-commercialization. And if I may, before I ask you, David, on the second question. So I've got an area on South Walker that is a combination of professional buildings, dentist physicians, and homes, and they're okay with increasing professional offices there, but they don't want any type of commercialization to come along Walker Avenue in this particular area. And I respect that. That's what they've asked for, and we'll try our best to keep that from happening. So, David, now, my question to you, for example, at 63rd and Kelly, there are commercial activities, as shown on this map. There's a convenience store, a gas station. Should an applicant ask to have a, they wouldn't, if an applicant for this type of business wanted to locate there, they wouldn't even have to come before us, would they, since it's already zoned commercial?
If it's, yes, straight C3, they could make use of the sales portion pursuant to the retail use unit that would be established in C3.
And so there's no, we don't have any ability to restrict that kind of business if it's already zoned commercial? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So briefly, I understand what the neighbors are saying, but I think it, and there was some confusion about the notices that were sent. So the notice that was sent before Planning Commission, the first speaker mentioned some sort of bait and switch or some sort of lack of trust. I want to make sure that the council's clear that it had nothing to do with my client. The city development services is who sends the notice. And so while I appreciate them saying it's the commercialization that they're worried about, the notice that was sent for Planning Commission said, "The purpose of this request is to allow modified O2 general office district that will also allow retail." So they were on notice that retail was contemplated prior to Planning Commission, and nobody showed up to protest. No letters were sent. It was only after the notice was sent for city council that said, "The site will be developed in accordance with the modified O2," and then specifically said, "and medical marijuana dispensary." And so I appreciate them saying that that's not their concern, but to me, it seems fairly obvious that that is their concern because retail was contemplated in the notice sent to Planning Commission. And there are commercial uses north of 63rd. Coles Garden is an event center. I would submit that that is a commercial use, a heavy commercial use. In fact, at times, when there's large weddings, large events, anything like that, that is a commercial use. And so the use itself, if this was a little dress shop, and that was the limited nature of the retail, I'm willing to bet that there would not be a concern about the commercialization.
And if I might add, at our meeting that we had last night, if I'm not mistaken, it was Mr. and Mrs. Overall who actually said, they spoke with the applicant, and he came to their home and basically said he wanted to put a law office. So again, this is the initial conversation that I understand that the residents had with this applicant, that it was going to be a law office, which obviously, no one is against a law office, but again, when we're adding the piece of retail to office space, that is where the concern came into play for these residents. So, and then even when we're talking about this event center, please keep in mind, this event center is gated in. You know, it's its own place. It's its own entity when we're looking at it that way. The way this home sits in this area, as you look at it on 63rd Street, it sits kind of up in the area, but there are also three to four other homes that are within this area as well, which the applicant actually owns. So again, when we're looking at this, we want to be mindful of, again, there were about 35 people who also, that live in that neighborhood protest or said they are not in approval of this particular development for their neighborhood, which it neighbors. And we're also looking at Millwood Public Schools, which is not far from there. We have bus routes that go through that area, and there is, if you just go down all the way 63rd from Kelly to, actually, from 35 to Martin Luther King, on the north side, there is no commercial whatsoever, whatsoever.
David, is it also correct, my memory is, that Coles Garden was not developed as an event center? It was developed as a sculpture garden for, to display the Coles artwork.
Yes and no.
And then it was converted, so.
And then converted again. I mean, there was then additional zoning cases that came through. So it was always contemplated by the Coles that it would be some form of an event center.
It was kind of a slow drip into the neighborhood, though.
Our office was involved in that, and I'm not sure what the perception was, but it was always, I think, contemplated that they would host events.
But again, the neighborhood had to accept this when we're looking at that. So we're trying to, the neighbors have said, and that neighborhood have basically said, this is not something as far as the retail portion that they want to see in their neighborhood. And if you look, again, the way that this sits, we have that Oklahoma National Guard Training Center. It is right on the gate of this neighbor, of what they're asking for as far as this development is concerned.
Let me ask you this, David. I'm a little confused. When did the applicant acquire the property, and what currently sits on the property, if anything?
Currently, there's a house and a detached garage. I'm not sure of the year that he acquired it, but his intent is to convert the existing structure to his law office and also a medical marijuana dispensary.
Kenny, it would be my preference to defer this, because I'd like to go look at the property and do a little research, because you're throwing out a lot of different things, and I'd just like to see it for myself. So if you'd entertain that motion, I would make it.
I would gladly entertain that we defer this at least to our next council meeting.
I move to defer it to the next council meeting.
February 26th, okay.
I've got a question. Should we vote first, or should I ask it first?
As it regards the motion to defer?
No.
We'll vote real quick, if that's okay, and then we'll address your question. So we've got a motion in a second to defer this item to the next council meeting. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes. The item is deferred. We'll remain on the item for a moment for James's question.
Just how the plan is set out, it's a little bit confusing to me on the drive to the homes that are behind.
It's a shared drive.
So it is going to be a shared drive with the law office and the homes?
Yes, sir.
But it looks kind of like it's a gravel road at this point, if it not?
I believe it's partially.
Okay.
I have a question as well. Kenny, this 300-foot rule has seemed inadequate to me so often over the last eight years, but when you're talking about converting R1 to commercial, and then you only have to notify within 300 feet, and there's only two homes within that 300 feet, is that 300 feet part of an ordinance, or is it in our charter somewhere? Where does that?
First, it's state statute. It's also in the ordinance, but there's a provision in the ordinance that if you don't notify a certain number of tracks, I believe it is, Bob can fill it on. You have to extend it out.
Extend.
So how does, I mean?
Well, it extends out until you have 10 total property owners notified, 100-foot increments.
But do we have the option of extending that out if we want? I mean, does the state statute limit you to 300 feet? Or can we take it upon ourselves to? Because it does, I mean, I've seen this in, when people convert R1 to commercial, there is the possibility for dominoes to fall in this extent to involve many homes.
Right. You could notify further out, farther out. It won't change the legal protest, because that's controlled by statute. A legal protest is A legal protest is based on the 300 feet and the number of owners or tracks that protest within the 300 feet. But you could notify more people.
So, the 300 feet is a minimum, and there is no maximum? There is no state mandated maximum?
Right.
So, you could, when we see these things coming, we could extend it out?
Yes.
And I think one of the things, when I was an HOA president, people would get notice. They wouldn't act on it. They wouldn't tell the HOA. And then we were behind the eight ball trying to deal with it. And so, I don't know if we can amend the ordinance to require that if there's an HOA in the area, that it be notified, but that's something I'd like to look at.
Yeah, just the officers of the HOA or something.
Counsel, or Counselman McAtee, and then David.
I don't want to muddy the water, but I'm going to muddy the water and ask this question, Bob. The documentation that I have here shows the subject property in the dotted lines. Immediately to the east of that, my documentation shows a plot of land that is zoned R4. That's correct. Is that correct? What's out there?
The training center and that piece are all zoned R4.
So, therefore, correct me if I'm wrong, if I owned that property, I could develop an R4 apartment complex there tomorrow and never have to come before for a zoning change?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselman Greenwell?
Yes, thank you. So, going back to the notification issue, especially in some of the more rural areas, we really encounter some problems. And a suggestion of having signs placed on the property itself or nearby the property, is that allowable for us to introduce that as a requirement?
You could. It was... Actually, that's an idea that was proposed probably back in the 90s.
So, there's no limitations on us requiring that? Again, especially in the more rural areas.
Right.
Where getting the certain number of people notified can be a challenge. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on then. 9A5, 1601 Northwest 19th Street, moving from R1 to SPUD 1094. Councilwoman Salya.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anybody signed up to speak? Hey, the applicant is here. Would you mind sharing a little bit about this project? It's another interesting story.
Sure. David Box, 522 Caulfield Drive. Sam Gresham, who is the applicant, is also here with me. This is an infill project at 19th and McKinley. And what Mr. Gresham intends to do is 20 separate units on the site. We had a bunch of conversations with Commissioner Highsmith during the process. He had some specific design ideas that he asked us to implement, all of which Mr. Gresham agreed to do. So, what you'll have is a little community, and Mr. Gresham's been involved in several of them now, where you'll have one drive in that'll be off of 19th and then one drive out. He's had a lot of success in these. There was a lot of support at Planning Commission. It was recommended for approval unanimously by the Planning Commission. It is worth noting that this is in an area the city has designated as urban medium. So, it's in an area that it'd be contemplated that you'd see an increase in density, and this comports within the range of density anticipated within the urban medium district.
David, there were some protesters, and can you share with us what they were concerned about and how we've addressed that?
So, we haven't addressed it because frankly, there was nothing to address. The protester that appeared at Planning Commission appeared and informed the commission that it was her opinion that people who rent drive down property values. That seemed to offend the Planning Commission. She was challenged by Commissioner Highsmith to provide any data. She has to support the fact that renters drive property values down. Of course, she was unable to do so, and she was asked to sit down. Therefore, it was approved unanimously.
Okay, so we do have two TEs, though. Have you agreed to those, one of them being that two of the units must face 19th Street?
Yes. Those were some of the design features that Commissioner Highsmith had asked us to do. So, we do agree with the TEs, yes.
Okay, great. Well, I would move approval of the project.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A6, at 4800 South Sunny Lane Road, moving from SPUD 944 to SPUD 1095. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yep.
This is another item that received unanimous approval, the Planning Commission, so I would move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9B was previously deferred. Looks like that will be March 12th. Brings us to 9C. This is ordinance on final hearing. This is the third of three meetings related to this proposal to amend our zoning and planning code. We had a presentation, then we had a public hearing, and today would be the potential final vote. So, I'd entertain a motion or questions?
Some motions.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9D1, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures listed here, A through F. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the public hearing portion, 9D1? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for 9D2, a resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated.
Move 9D2.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E1, this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures, except for the three that the city manager withdrew earlier in the meeting, struck later earlier in the meeting. Anyone here wish to speak on a public hearing portion of 9E1? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution under 9E2. This is a resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F1, this is the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings herein listed, items A through G, except for item F, which was struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion of item 9F1? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution at 9F2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9G1 on page 21 of the printed agenda. This is a resolution considering the salary continuation request of Sergeant Jordan Brown for up to an additional six months. I don't know that we need executive session, so if you'd like to give a motion, I'll take it.
Move the resolution.
We've got a motion and a second for the resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9H1, resolution authorizing new municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Ashton Fee, City of Oklahoma City. I don't believe that the municipal counselor requests an executive session, so I'd entertain a motion.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second for the resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9I1, joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, authorizing new municipal counselor to settle the workers' comp, subrogation claim, et cetera. Again, don't believe we need executive session, so I'd entertain a motion.
Move the joint resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9J, enter into executive session on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications regarding litigation in the case of City of OKC versus Hilltop Plaza. We would need to take a vote to do this executive session, which we would do at the end of our other business.
Move the item into executive session.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will again handle that executive session at the conclusion of our other business, along with the executive session for OCPPA. 9K1, claim recommended for denial. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to deny the claim. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. Items A through K can be taken with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item 11 on page 23 of your printed agenda, items from council. Maybe we'll handle the business here first and then go around the horseshoe. We'll start with item 11A. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance related to noise. This relates to engine brakes, Jake brakes. This was a... This has been brought to us by Councilman McAtee. Last meeting, we had a presentation on it. Today's the public hearing, and then there would be a potential vote at the next meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion relating to item 11A? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 11B, a resolution acknowledging the cultural and historic significance of the property at 1440 North Everest Avenue, known as the Brockway Center, et cetera. This was deferred from January 29th so that we could hear more about this issue, and I'll turn it here over to Councilwoman Nice, perhaps, to quarterback this.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor. Do want to say that after we decided to defer, there was already a meeting for me to visit the care center to take place on the 14th. And due to the sensitiveness of the conversation, I felt it was important for us to move the meeting up, for me to tour the center as well as have a conversation. So, that happened this past Thursday on February the 7th. I'm assuming that was the date. But with that meeting, I did speak with the executive director and spoke with a board member and another young lady that works for the care center, and I am remiss because I do not remember her title, so excuse me for that. But the conversation that did come into play was about, first, educating the care center a little bit more about the importance and significance of what the women did, the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs, and their importance and just what their role played in not only Oklahoma City but across this great nation. And I did speak at the end of the conversation. It was, the conversation was had, if I would possibly remove the term, "Do not demolish." And I said, "That would be subject to me having a conversation with the ladies, of course, and to see how they felt about the importance and significance of this building for them and their club." So, that was the way that conversation ended on Thursday. On Friday, I understand there was an application submitted for demolition, and I had not spoken with the ladies yet as far as the Federation of Colored Women's Clubs. But I do want to first have the care center, because I did ask them Thursday to do a presentation of the care center because, number one, it is of importance, what they do. And two, I think it's meaningful for us as the council and for the city to understand more about their mission. And then I will go into how it coincides with what the women have done and what they are continuing to do. And we have some women who are here to represent the local federated colored women's, the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs, the Oklahoma City Federation. So, they will also speak. So, now, we will hear from both sides. So, I'll ask for the care center to please come and make their presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have packets for you. Sure. How to discuss. I've included all of the materials. It's information about the care center on the other side. Good morning. My name is Stacey McNeil, and I'm the CEO of the Care Center, and thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today. Slide, okay. I want to tell you a little bit about the Care Center. We are a place of hope and healing. We help children after they've been abused, they're in a severe case, all the severe cases of child abuse and shocking and heinous cases come to the Care Center. We were founded in 1991. We have been rooted in the Culberson Heights District for over 27 years. So, we have a big investment in where we stand. We are the child abuse experts in your community. We are the only organization serving comprehensive services and unduplicated services. We're it. We are your child advocacy center for all of Oklahoma County. Located currently on our five-building campus are the Oklahoma City Police Department Crimes Against Children Unit, Department of Human Services Crimes Against Children Unit, the FBI, OSBI, Department of Homeland Security, and JAG, as well as our Problematic Sexual Behavior Unit and CCAN, as well as we have mental health, forensic interviews, and so on and so on on our campus. We are a very robust organization. Moving on. Our 2018 impact is quite large. You can see children and adults supported by our Victim Services Program, over 4,000, and children and adults trained in our prevention education programs are over 7,000. So, big impact that we're making in our community. We are fighting an epidemic. It's an epidemic of mass proportions. I want to tell you a statistic. This is one of the things I want you to remember today, okay? One in three girls and one in five boys are abused before their 18th birthday. One in three, one in five. At the Care Center, we help children of all types of abuse, neglect, physical, sexual, human trafficking, sex trafficking, witness to a violent crime or murder, and severe domestic violence. Again, these are the worst of the worst kinds of cases. It's estimated that only one in 10 children will tell someone about their abuse. However, with our prevention education numbers and our program, we're cutting that number in half. So, our prevention education numbers are working. We're very proud of that. I want to tell you a little bit about our vision and our road to expansion. We have increased the number of children and clients that we're serving by 62% in the last five years. So, over, you know, we're doubling, and quite frankly, we are out of space. We are not able to keep up with the demand, and our facilities just are not appropriate for the size of children and clients that we're serving. We need larger client and child-centered areas, and we also are interested in bringing the community training and community spaces. So, we want to open up our building to be a place where if there is a car safety check, you know, checklist and training, we'll be the place that that's happening at. People will be able to have meetings there and convene, as well as have training and education. We need a safe, big emphasis on safe, ADA compliant and technology-advanced building. The new design that we have been working on for the past two years ensured that 1440 Everest would maintain the neighborhood feel and would include a whitewash break as a nod to some of the past. We believe in this neighborhood. We've been here for 27 years, and we have rehabbed five of the buildings that we're in. So, we believe in rehab, and that was the journey that we stepped into when we gained the property 1440, was a journey to see, how can we rehab this building? You're going to hear in a little bit that journey and what we came to. Okay, here to talk is our vice president, Tracy Schwartz.
Good morning. I'm Tracy Schwartz. The Care Center's been working on our plans for expansion since March of 2017. You'll see in our expansion roadmap here that in March of 2017, we formed the Future Planning Committee. And between March and November of 2017, we researched our options for growth in the which can, excuse me, included possibly colocating with another agency, acquiring some vacant lots for parking, how we could better utilize the five buildings that we already occupy, and the possible purchase of 1440 North Everest. During that time, we also sent a survey to all of our stakeholders. Once we compiled those results, it was decided to seek the input of an architect to kind of help us with space planning and what an expansion would look like. In 2018, in January, our board approved the contract negotiation and possible purchase of 1440 North Everest Avenue. We were presented from our architect three conceptual basic plans and estimates for renovation versus a new build. Our committee did agree to research renovation, but ultimately decided on a new building. And as our plans for the next 20 years were further developed and our spaces are further defined and our needs are further defined, our building grew from approximately a 3,500 square foot building to a 5,900 or 58, 55 square foot building. And so, the property as it sits just is not feasible to be renovated for the end use that we need it to be. As 2018 continued to proceed, we further defined the... We started that preparation and then submitted our application for a grant through the Community Development Block Grant. So that's where we are today.
I think that's a real important slide to show that we've been working on this for two years, and we did have due diligence to our community to research all of our available options. And we involved a future planning committee. We have our Chair of the Future Planning Committee here today. That had 12 different members on it. Next slide, please. So these are some discussion points that I'd like to have with City Council today. When 1440 was sold in 2011, as we visited with Councilwoman Nice, the club membership was declining, and it was challenging to keep up with the building repairs. I think that's still an issue today. Efforts to ensure 1440 was placed on the National Historic Registry were unsuccessful in 2011. The property has been owned twice before. So any inference that there was prior knowledge of the history of this building is not true. The care center has a large financial investment already in 1440 Everest. The care center's application for CBDG funds was denied. We're sad about that, but we're also, we believe in this project and that this is the best option for children, and so we will be pursuing our capital campaign in other ways. We believe the best solution is compromise. We want to honor the Brockway Center. That's a no-brainer to us. We want, we've offered several suggestions, naming rights in our new facility, historical wall, really literally a wall, and how cool would it be if we could save some brick from the older house? And the historical wall had pictures and documents, not just a plaque, but really the ability to take kids that are in the building to say, "Look, look at the great things that happened in this community. They've paved the way for you to be here in a safe facility today." And of course, an outdoor marker, or some type of sign, or monument, or something of that sort. Okay? Next slide. I'd like for you to hear from our engineer and our architect. I believe these are, for me, this was the big decision on why we could not renovate. This is Clint.
Good morning. I'm Clint Newsom with Basis Design, the architect that was brought in to assist the care center. And, excuse me, I think our major concern is the safety, the life safety of occupants of the future intended use. The structural integrity is really bad at this point. If it's a residence, it's not too bad, but for the intended use and for the amount of occupants that the care center will have, it's, in our opinion, in very bad shape. Jamal, do you want to come up? Jamal's with Obelisk Engineering, Structural Engineer.
No, I would be speaking this morning. Good morning.
We know it's hard for engineers to speak publicly. Speak? We admire your courage.
So this particular project, I was brought on to research the structural integrity of a building. I had no prior knowledge of what it was before, and I'd been told what was the future use. So in looking at the structure, having no bias whatsoever, I like math and science, numbers are the numbers, and just to see, I wrote up a report, I don't know if you guys are, have it or not. Yes, I tried to be as fair as possible to what I thought it would take to bring this structure up to the future use, which was explained to me for, it's no longer residential. So it's an old house. If it was going to continue to be an old house, if I was going to move my family in there, you know, there's things that you do to an old house when it's just your single family. But in increasing the occupancy, there are things that have to be done. There are triggers that are, that go off for lateral stability and safety when you have more and more people in a building. So my report was to speak to that part, and that is all.
Yeah, thanks, Jamal. So in our research, you know, we probably echo what Stacy and Tracy said, but we went through extensive research, really comparing and contrasting cost comparisons, pro formas, with the renovation of the existing structure versus a new build. In that research, we found that the house had been added on to twice. There was different foundations, so differential settlement was a big issue. There's cracking throughout. Methods and means of the original structure was jeopardizing the integrity of the structure. There's jacks in the basement holding up one of the major beams below. And so, like they said, we did our due diligence to try to save this and renovate. And then as we progressed in programming and space requirements, the existing building is 3,500 square feet, which with circulation factor, you know, you could probably only use about 2,500 of that for the care center. And their programming requirements have grown to over 50, about 5,900 square feet. So with all that being said, it was our recommendation to demolish and build new.
On the next slide, you're going to see some of the, the jacks in the basement are a huge concern for me, knowing that those jacks were placed to literally hold up the Those are some real telltale signs. You have the full report, the engineer's report, and the architect's report in your folders. It's very technical, so I just use simple terms. So a lot of cracking, cracking literally in all areas, exterior and interior. Okay, let's move on. I want to talk about what the possible negative effects that could happen today if we're unable to demolish this building. Number one, we own this building. We've currently invested about $400,000, not including the staff and committee time. How will that investment be recouped? We are a nonprofit organization, so the assumption that we have an endless supply of money is false. Every single penny we make, or earn, or have a grant from, I want it to go to children. So we have a really high return rate of what, how we're spending our money. We want kids to be the recipient. We can't expand to the spaces that we really need. Our children deserve this facility. They need this facility. To know that there could be a potential day where I have to turn children away is completely unacceptable. So like I said, the demand for seeing more clients and children could be halted. Also, two years of planning and input from our community and stakeholders and the board isn't, wouldn't necessarily be heard. The house continues to stay in disrepair with no honor to the Brockway Center. What we're hoping for is to do the best of both worlds. Kids can have a new place to flourish and have space and begin their healing journey and their education journey, as well as we're honoring the women that deserve to be honored. Right now, none of that is occurring. Last slide. We are requesting, we're very specific, we want you to recognize the significant resources we've invested in producing a solution for growth and for serving children. We'd like for you to remove the resolution and allow the care center to demolish 1440 while honoring the Brockway Center. I do have some, our Future Planning Committee Chair that I'd like for you to hear from.
Stacy, just on that last bullet point, just to clarify, this is a advisory resolution in any case, right? You know, when it said, "allow you to demolish," we don't actually have that power. This is a, the demolition permit that was referenced earlier is being submitted to the Capitol Zoning Board.
I understand. I have a high level of respect for the decision of the City Council and...
We recognize that. Good morning. I'm Joni.
I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Go ahead.
Future Planning Committee Chair and also board member. I mean, we definitely recognize that you don't have the power to tell us that we can't demolish. However, your recommendations are, you know, very key to this city and are highly respected, and we highly respect Ms. Nice. I hope I said that right. Nice.
Thank you.
I apologize. My name is Joni, so people botch my name commonly. So for us, it's really important to work out a solution here. And honestly, we're looking for a little bit of guidance from you as well, because we are in a dilemma at this point. As the Future Planning Committee Chair, I thought it was very, very important to plan long-term for the care center and to look at what our options were. And when we surveyed stakeholders, we surveyed many of our former clients, we surveyed all the employees, our board members, the Oklahoma City Police, DHS, everyone that really works with the care center or is affected by our cause, we surveyed. And for them, the most important things for us to consider was technology, keeping up with the safety and security of the information that we see, as well as the atmosphere and the feel of our location and where these children are being served, to make sure that they are able to be comfortable in their environment. Because whether it seems or not, their environment and who they're talking to and their comfort level is very key to their process of disclosure. And so, I don't know if you've seen, I know that you have seen the care center and the location, but there are several buildings and there's a nice, quaint street, and we have, you know, updated many of those buildings. And so, the atmosphere and the feel of the care center for these children was very important to us. And honestly, I didn't, wasn't really in favor of demolishing this building. I wanted to look and see if we could update this building to serve our needs and to incorporate it to our current community. We also looked at other lots around this building to see if we could possibly buy other locations, and that was not feasible for our plan and for the space that we needed. This lot came available to us, this home did, and it was very, I mean, it kind of fit into our plan, and it really bats up to our current building perfectly. And so, it was an easy, no-brainer for us to decide to purchase this property. I do think it's very important that we honor these lovely women and their cause. Your cause is very important, and it's very similar to our cause, and so I think that we would love to work with you. But at the same time, we are struggling with what this means, if this, a recommendation were to go forward, that this be on the Historic Registry, or that this house become historic. I don't think we would be able to continue to expand the care center and to serve these children and the health and safety of these children. These children of Oklahoma County is our first priority and our first goal. So with that, I mean, I don't know if I left anything out.
Good morning. I'm Adam Brooks. I'm a resident of Ward 2 and a member of the board of the care center. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Nice for speaking with us about these issues. It was a good discussion, and I'd like to reiterate some of the points that we've already made, which is that we understand that it's unfortunate that so much history is lost, especially in our community, and it's unfortunate that this building cannot practically be saved. But I think the board, especially myself, are excited that we have the opportunity to help share the story of the history. Right now, the Brockway Center's history is fairly well unknown in most of the community. We don't think keeping the house would allow that really to share the story. We're looking for opportunities to amplify that. We don't want to take over the story, but we do think it's important to help the community. We've talked about why it's not technically feasible to save it, what we want to do for the children, but we're hoping to create a partnership here that benefits the entire community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Aaron Curry. I'm the Vice President of the Board for the Care Center. Been involved for four years now. And what I can speak to, I don't want to repeat really what's already been said. I think there's been some really great discussion here today to educate on this issue. I think what I can speak to is the integrity of the process and what Stacy, the CEO of the care center, has gone through to make sure that everything is done correctly, and that when an issue comes up, like came up in this case, that it was addressed first in love, first in being able to say, "How can we honor, how can we do these things for the groups in the community?" That was the first thing that she talked with us about, was how do we, how do we bring them on board? How can we share with them how their support in the past even has been meaningful, and how do we continue to do that? And so, what I can speak to is that her leadership and the board's leadership has been the entire time, how do we expand the services, of which, to my knowledge, if I'm right, I think it's about still 30, 35% of the known need. So even the kids that we're helping every week, and there's about 50 kids a week coming through, there's only about 35% of the kids actually being helped that need to be helped. And so, my work in the fundraising aspect of this, as a board member, has been to expand the amount of dollars that we can use that are opened up for expanding the level of services and education, of which we've done that. Over the last five years, we've gone from free cash flow, that's non-grant money, from about $50,000 to almost $400,000 to $500,000. And that's opened up opportunities for us to be able to use that money for education. Now we're in high schools, and we're educating high school students on how to, you know, bring up this issue and talk about uncomfortable topics. And the board kind of makes fun of me, because they know where I grew up. And I keep thinking, you know, I never knew these issues, I didn't know this issue existed. If you haven't been to the care center, has everybody taken a tour of the care center? Have you guys been around? Maybe some of you have, some of you haven't. If you haven't, take a tour. It opened me up to, you know, what goes on in our community that we don't talk about, right? And the fact that someone like Stacy and what this organization has done to bring this issue to light is remarkable. And I, my only thought when I heard that there was a group that might be doing something to actually derail the fact that we want to expand this, and I don't think they mean to do that, I think they just want to be honored, and I think that's important. They should be honored. But I think, I was just surprised that maybe they just don't understand the kind of work that we're doing day-to-day. So I just want to thank the council for hearing us out today, and thank you for your time and attention.
I can certainly ask questions. I know there was, I watched the last city council meeting, I know there was a lot of discussion. I have been with the care center for five and a half years. During, when I came, the house was owned by another owner, and I didn't have the opportunity to learn as much as I should have about the history. That's my one regret, and this has taught me, if anything, as a leader, I'm definitely focused on moving forward and change, but it also, this has reminded me to always look back. And so, that's the one thing that I told Councilwoman Nice, is that I will apologize to the ladies that I wasn't even more aggressive in my attempt to look back at our history. And, but I hope this can be resolved today. I think both groups have amazing missions and we're really fighting for the underserved and those who need our help the most. I can entertain any questions.
Well, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have representation from both parties.
Of course, of course.
And then we'll have questions afterwards. So thank you. And let me say thank you to Ms. Tracy, Clint, Stacy, Jamal, Joni, Joni, I'm sorry, Adam, and Aaron for your comments. But I do want to make mention of the fact, the group was never to derail any, anything to happen to this, to what the care center does. And I want to reiterate once again, as I did at our last meeting, the care center, thank you for your service. Thank you for being in the community. Obviously, there have been many benefits to our young people because of the great work that you do. So this has nothing to do with the work that you do, because you do phenomenal work. And I think it's to be commended for you coming on, Ms. Stacy, and being with the care center for five years, and the growth that they have been able to attain with the care center. So I just want to make that public, that again, this is nothing, this has nothing to do with the work that you do, because again, as I've said in our last meeting, the work that you do coincides and mimics the very fabric of what these women stood for. So with that being said, we'll start with a presentation, and then I'll have some of the ladies come up and speak to the, to what's going on with the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs. And this is a presentation that I did this weekend, because again, it's important for us to at least understand the back history of what the women have done and are continuing to do. We're going to talk about the history and founders, and as you see, this is an original banner that belonged to the club, and this is what their motto is. And these are, they formed in about 1896. Did we have one with the women? Did we have one with the women, actually, a picture? Okay. We'll stay here. They founded in eighteen ninety-six at a convention in Washington, DC. And the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs, it's considered the oldest organization of its kind in existence today. So consider that when we're looking and talking about these women. And again, there was one woman that was in attendance at this meeting in eighteen ninety-six from Oklahoma Territory. The founders that we have from eighteen ninety-six are Harriet Tubman, who we know was an abolitionist and an activist. We also have Frances Harper, who was next to her, and she was also an abolitionist and considered the mother of African-American journalism. Next to her, we have Idaby Rose Barnett, who was a very well-known journalist, and she led anti-Lynchings Crusades in the eighteen eighties. And next to her, the first president of this organization was Mary Church Durrell. She was an activist, she was a suffragist, and she was one of the first African-American women to ever earn a degree in North America. So as you see, there is a lot of rich history that's associated with these, with the clubs. And we have Oklahoma Clubs. And this particular banner that you're looking at here, it says Oklahoma Federation of Colored Women, nineteen ten. This particular banner, you can see right now at the Smithsonian of African-American History Museum in Washington, DC. So that's how important that this particular club and that banner was. As we're looking at the history of the women from the era of Oklahoma, the first picture that you see is Judith Horton. And she was a founding member of the Excelsior Club, which was in Guthrie, Oklahoma. And the important thing to know about Ms. Judith Horton is she migrated from, I believe it was Kansas, but I could be mistaken, but she, it was either Tennessee or Kansas, she migrated in about eighteen ninety-two to Oklahoma Territory to become a principal of the colored schools in the Guthrie area. She also was the woman behind our first African-American library in the state of Oklahoma. And the reason that came is because her husband was denied access to a local library in Guthrie. So what she did was got her club members and the community together to help to establish an African-American library for the people in that community. So that spoke of the importance of Oklahoma Territory and what these women stood for then. We move to about nineteen oh seven with Harriet Jacobson, and she was the East Side Culture Club Oklahoma City President, and that's how they organized. So in nineteen ten, we're looking at Avery Chapel AME Church, and that's where they formed the Federation of Negro Women's Clubs. So about nineteen twenties is around that era, too. So what we're looking at here, again, that second picture is going to be Ms. Harriet Price Jacobson. And about nineteen thirty-eight, she addressed the twenty-fifth anniversary of the founding of the Colored Women's Clubs. And she basically said, "We felt that we were laying the foundation of an organization which would in a few years be the most helpful that could have been planned for two twenty-four East Second Street," which was their first address. And many, they did many different things, and one of their first things was to support the Fund for Preservation of the Frederick Douglass Home as a national shrine, which is located right now in Richmond, Virginia. And this is the lady in question, Mrs. Maude Jane Brockway. And Mrs. Brockway, she was the seventh administrative president that they had for the local Federation Club. And she was a native of Curtis, Arkansas, so she also migrated to Oklahoma. And she served as a president of many organizations, but she had a career in public service as well as teaching in schools that included Ardmore in Berwyn. And she has an honorary degree from Arkansas Baptist College in the School of Religion. And she was named Woman of the Year in Oklahoma City in nineteen fifty-six. So obviously, her name represents her very well, being named Brockway Centers. But as a president, she introduced and put into action entertainment. So she was a key part of a lot of the entertainment that happened for these clubs. And as we're looking at, I was looking at articles, trying to find more information about the women and even addresses where they were located. In one article in particular that I found was from nineteen thirty-eight. And they had a party in one of their homes to entertain some of the young people for them to come. But this, the first of its kind, because not only did they entertain the young people that were in the community, this was the first engagement that they had that was open to the white children that they had. So this is something, they were the first of their kind to include other cultures and to help make sure there was diversity in what they were doing to help to establish a better Federation at, for the women and for Oklahoma. Now, their first location was at five oh one Northeast Fourth Street. And if you look right now at five oh one Northeast Fourth Street, it is right on Lincoln and Fourth, and it is probably on the south side, and it is now grass. If you go to the location at six fifteen Northeast Fourth, which is on the opposite side of Lincoln, it is now grass. Because the women have had to, been, obviously, when we had urban renewal, we had some things that happened in the Deuce area, this is where we are. And fourteen forty North Everest was their last landing place for the centers. And this is a picture, and I'll just pass that around so you all can see where they are, that particular location now is the fourteen forty address that we're talking about. And when they had their, established their buildings, it included executive offices, auditoriums, dining rooms, kitchens, they had nurseries, and they would also have weddings, assist servicemen. So this was one of the, the first of its kind during this time period during the war. And one of the things that I did read as well is that with some of the ladies, young ladies, they had the little, they would have escorts in that time, where the ladies who were going to be married, they had to have chaperones before they got married in order for them not to consummate the marriage before. So just, that's, that's just what the women did. And in that time, this is what they did. So it's very, again, important for us to just understand the piece of the history because I think even when we're looking at it, this particular building, it's one of the few that we have, not only in Oklahoma to represent National Association of Colored Women's Clubs, but it's one of the few in the nation that we have to recognize what these women did and what these women stood for. So I'll ask, we have a few of the ladies here, and they can give more information about some of the things that have happened throughout the years.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jackie Gates, and I am the State President of the Oklahoma Federation of Colored Women's Clubs. And I'll let Sandra in.
And my name is Sandra Finney, and I'm the President of the Oklahoma City Federation of Colored Women's Club. Thank you very much for allowing us to present this. Oklahoma City was fortunate to have Mrs. Maude Jane Sterling, it's her maiden name, who was born in Curtis, Arkansas, and had moved to Oklahoma City. She married Mr. William Brockway, who was from Oklahoma. Mrs. Brockway was a milliner, realtor and schoolteacher. As a realtor, she and her husband had many properties. Mrs. Brockway was president of the Oklahoma City Federation of Colored Women's Clubs for twenty-five years. She also served as president of the Oklahoma Baptist State Convention's Women's Department for twenty-five years. She gave her annual state convention's address to the Women's Department in Oakmuggie October the twenty-fourth, nineteen fifty-nine. She finished that, she sat down, had a heart attack and died. The history of the Brockway Center began with the first building located, as you have seen on the presentation, at five oh one Northeast Fourth Street. This was with funds raised by Mrs. Brockway and the City Federation. With the growth of the Federation, a new building was purchased at six fifteen Northeast Fourth Street. The builder continued the vision and the mission of lifting as we climb. With the help of the City of Oklahoma City, this property was renovated from foundation to the roof and used as a library for people of color. This location housed a free will baby clinic, day nursery, and a place where young girls were taught the fundamentals of homemaking and used by other organizations, churches in the community. In addition, Mrs. Brockway saw a need to help young women who came to the city to work or attend school and had no place to live. She provided a place at the center and served as their housemother. The Federation was in need of a larger edifice to accommodate the growing needs of the clubs to serve the community. Because of her dedication and commitment to the national motto, lifting as we climb, it was the consensus of the membership that the new building located at fourteen forty North Everest, which had been purchased by the Oklahoma City Federation of Colored Women's Clubs in nineteen sixty-eight, also renamed the Maude J. Brockway Center. At this location, a host of community clubs, churches, school reunions, families utilizing the center as a gathering place. The Oklahoma City Federation of Colored Women's Club held local, region, state board meetings and all of its community service projects, like the Back to School Bash, Annual Health Fair, and a computer lab which taught basic computer skills to the community. The Brockway Center was the pilot location for the National Grandparents Academy, which is an intergenerational mentoring program, was adopted by the National Association of Colored Women's Clubs and youth affiliates. The Oklahoma Federation of Colored Women's Clubs made every effort. They tried to get grants, petitioned the city, and partnerships to secure funding for upkeep and maintenance of this property, but failed in its efforts. In the end, the membership elected to sell and to sell, and out of those proceeds of the sale, a portion of the money was set aside for an endowed scholarship, which is managed by the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. The following is just a partial list of our most recent contributions to the community. Annual scholarships through Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. Sponsor of a play for Black Histories Month to the St. John Christian Heritage Academy, where other elementary schools are invited. Hosted families with the meal at the Ronald McDonald House. Recognized leaders from various aspects of the community, to include education, medical, civic, and the arts during the lifters and climbers luncheon. The East Side Culture Club, which was a local club, provided bears and books to the care center. The Business and Professional Women's Clubs provided monetary donations, diapers and blankets to the infant crisis center. Provided monetary donations, food and toiletries to the youth services center, homeless, for homeless teens. School supplies to the Little Light Christian School, which is a school for incarcerated, which is a school for children of incarcerated parents. Continue to support all initiatives from the national, our southwest region, the state Federation. So as you can see, although we don't have a club building any longer, we are still very active in our community. It is the desire of this, of the Oklahoma City Federation that this body preserve fourteen forty North Everest as a historical building in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to the ladies for the presentation and for all that you also do in the community. And as you heard, they have been very instrumental in also giving back to the Care Center. So they have provided and done donations of books as well as bears for that center. So there is a relation, there has been, had been, or has been a relationship there. We do have a letter from the Senator George Young, and he's the Chair of the Oklahoma Legislative Black Caucus. And he is in support of keeping the structure, and I can read it, or I can let you read it yourself. And also, the reason that unfortunately, the Care Center was denied the CDVG funds is because the state identified the Brockway Center as a potential historic structure. So obviously, that had nothing to do with us.
Can you explain that? What happened with the CDVG funds? The state did what?
So Matt Gaberson is here from the Planning Department. He can explain what the process is and what happened with the allocation of funds.
Hi, Matt Gaberson, Planning. Specifically, the answer to your question is, whenever we're contemplating use of CDVG funds, we have to do a cross-cutting environmental review. It's some of what you might think when you hear of environmental review, but one of the stages is we have to notify interested parties, the tribes that may have an interest in the project, and also the State Historic Preservation Office, for determination on historic relevancy of any project or property that we're intending to work on. Part of that is, you know, the SHPO gets, the State Historic Preservation Office gets thirty days to evaluate and determine the relevancy of the building in a historic sense. In this case, they came back with a determination that the building, in their view, has historic relevancy, so that our only alternatives are to move to a different project, a rehabilitation like project, or to pursue a further inquiry on historic preservation with the federal government, which is called a one oh six review. And it's a very lengthy process. We would have to be requested to pursue that avenue. So for the time being, because of the SHPO's determination, we cannot take any choice-limiting alternatives on this project, i.e. if the building's to come down, that would limit our choices to do an alternative, either an alternative project, or on a different site, or an alternative to demolition and construction, which would be a rehabilitation on the site. So until those alternatives are resolved, the project is not eligible for CDVG. Another aspect of the CDVG, we currently have a solicitation that's published, and proper zoning for the intended use is a requirement. And currently, as the project exists, it does not have, the project as requested is to newly construct a building. It's not to demolish the building with CDVG, it's to build a new building. But the property does not have the proper zoning for that activity at this time. So for those two reasons, the application that was submitted by Care Center is not being, it's not being considered by staff or a review committee at this time.
All right. That's really complicated for me to understand.
Yeah, the federal regulations are very complicated and murky.
But I think the idea, I think the point is that because of the review from the State Historic Preservation Office, they determined that there's potential historic value in this building, and because of that, they wouldn't authorize the use of CDVG funds. There was an application to use CDVG funds as a part of the project, they wouldn't authorize the use of the CDVG funds because it involved...
Demolition.
Demolition.
They're not making a determination on the use of CDVG, they're just making a determination on the historic relevancy, which limits our ability to pursue, or basically it sets us up, or we have to consider other alternatives.
So that's my question, is if they, if the Care Center was interested in renovating instead of demolishing, would they then be eligible for CDVG?
Certainly. CDVG, demolition is an eligible activity with CDVG. I mean, it is. A new construction is an eligible activity. Under these, under certain conditions, rehabilitation is certainly an eligible activity. What would need to happen was that City Care, their current application for the new construction is denied on the two merits that I just mentioned. If Care Center was interested in resubmitting an application for the rehabilitation, we would consider it. This application, this solicitation process expires at the end of June, and it's a competitive opportunity. So they would have to engage in a lot of additional work, you know, new budgets, new performas, new designs, in order to get an application ready for our consideration. So they would have to engage in a lot of additional work, you know, new budgets, new pro formas, new designs, in order to get an application ready for our consideration.
And we've done that. I mean, we used eight million for Fred Hall and Hall Capital to renovate--
That was a--
21C, that was a loan, or--
It's a Section 108 loan. It's a, it's part of the provisions under the CDBG regulations. It's not part of our annual allocation from the Department of, Department of Housing, Interment Development. We have to, on the 108, have to specifically apply for those funds, and we borrow the funds from the feds, and then we downstream loan them.
We thought allocation is the collateral.
Yeah. So the regulations kind of cover that activity, but it's not, the funds that are being let right now and that were applied for by Care Center are a part of our annual CDBG allocation.
Skelvin had a Section 108 loan component to it also, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
So we, we have a history of using CDBG or CDBG loans as a, to restore or renovate historic structures. So I guess my question would be, since you were denied for CDBG funds because you were asking to demolish, but he's saying that you'd be eligible for funds if instead your intent was to renovate, would those CDBG funds make renovation more economically feasible?
And may I also add, there's a possibility of historic tax credits, if I'm not mistaken, too. We had talked, we had talked about that in a meeting yesterday, so I think that could also be an option.
Which is what, the 21C Hotel was a combination of historic tax credits and CDBG loans. So they definitely can be used together?
Well, a couple of things. I think Matt pointed out to that, that it's a competitive process. There's no guarantee that the Care Center would receive those funds. And we've made application, and we're, we're two and a half years into this project already, and so we would have to delay that by another cycle. The bigger issue for me is, is that the usable square footage of the current 1440 Everest is 2,500 square feet, and we're building almost a 6,000, we need a 6,000-foot building. I don't know how you renovate without losing the structural integrity. It would not look like the same building, and then what's the point?
Then that would cause me to look for another site. I mean, you can't, you can't, you know that you're not going to get the funds if you don't apply for them. I mean, the question is, in this two-and-a-half-year period, why not apply for CDBG funds for renovation to see if that's a possibility?
Because we determined it wasn't feasible. You heard, you heard what the Future Planning Committee, what we, what we went through, and we identified, we researched renovation, and because of all of the things that we presented today, which are the structural, and I mean, the engineer and architect both stated that the structure can't, can't go through a renovation. It's not possible. And also, there's only 2,500 feet of square foot, square foot space, and I don't know how you renovate that for a 6,000-foot building.
I mean, that's, I didn't hear that it's impossible to renovate it. That's what I hear, is that you want a, you want a three times as bigger building.
We don't want, we need, for the children of Oklahoma County.
Right. So, I mean, to me, that would, why not look for another site, or another--
Because we have a five-building campus that we've been in for 27 years, and it is, backs right up to there, and we have plans to integrate that building into our other buildings and campus. We'd have to pick up and move our 27-year history from that area. It makes more sense to me that we would meet in the middle. Right now, nothing is being honored, no honor, no memorial, no monument to the Brockway Center, and that's what, that's what we're trying to negotiate. We feel like we can do so, so much good by honoring that history.
And you looked at preserving the structure and adding on to it?
I can't speak to that, but maybe our engineer can, our architect. I don't think you can actually add on to that structure for the types of spaces that we're needing. We need, upstairs, for example, our training and education spaces hold 100, and I don't know where, in that current building, it's obviously an older home, but it was owned previously two times before, so it just looks like a home. And so that's my answer, but I don't know if Clint has a different answer.
Could anyone answer your question, Councilwoman, about whether we looked at other sites? We did look at other sites, and that was part of our stakeholder review also, was what is the benefit for us to be in this current site? One is, we serve a lot of constituents in that area. Two, we are close proximity with OU, and we work with OU a lot, and so that, our location, where it's at, is really important to us, and it was very important to all of our stakeholders. And so we did talk to other, even organizations, about co-locating with them, and we looked at other properties and tried to look for other lots and other sites that would be big enough to house our growth, and we could not find that.
Okay, so, but a common, I understand that. A common technique in historic preservation is to save a structure and add to that, to get your other 3,500 square feet or whatever you're looking for. So was that, was that explored?
Yes, I mean, our architect mostly handled that, but that was something that I wanted, me personally, I wanted that explored, because preserving that house would have gone along with the theme of, you know, in the field with the rest of our campus, but for the needs we met, our needs, like Face was explaining about the, how many people we have, and what expansion we needed, and as well as bringing other agencies onto our campus, we, we just didn't, our understanding was that it was not feasible, also with the technology needs that we had.
Can we pull up a map, a Google map of the campus?
I went and looked at it the other day.
We initially explored three different options for the Care Center. We explored just a renovation of the existing building, and then we explored a renovation and add-on, kind of a hybrid, and then we explored the new build. And through that, through that process, we identified that, A, their program and space requirements were much greater than what we could do on a renovation, and B, the structural integrity of the existing structure, that there's been two add-ons, and there's a basement, and then there's two different foundations on the north and south, so a lot of differential settlement. I think the, the structural provocations that are, or problems that, that you would have to go through to bring that up would not even be economical, economically feasible to add-on to that. I mean, you'd almost have to, have to, you'd have to do a lot of foundation repair, and you'd have to do a lot of the basement repair, jacks, et cetera. And then adding on to that would cause other differential settlement, too, which, at this point, we can throw a contingency at it, but just the economics of that is, is pretty hard for us to even throw a number at. But we did explore all that.
A cost estimate, or a--
Not for the, not for the addition, no. In the beginning, when we, when we did these studies, we, we compared kind of apples to apples with a new build of the same size and structure of the existing, and it really came out awash for, as far as the monetary assessment. But the add-on, we just didn't think it was, it was feasible because of the structural integrity of the existing building, and the life safety of the occupants, the number of occupants that are going to be in that building.
That's really, that's really my concern, is if I have 100 children on that second floor, is that basement that has, that has jacks in it that essentially is holding, is that gonna, is that gonna work? I can't take a chance on that. I have engineers and architects telling me, don't do it. So that's my, as a CEO, that's what I'm leaning towards. I under, I understand what you're saying, and there's nothing more that I would like, and I think it, let's face it, anything is possible, but as a nonprofit organization, you know, we're working hard to raise the money for the space that we need. It's not going to be a fancy building. The only neat areas are going to be the child-centered areas, because that's what we're about. I would love to see a way that, that assert if something is special, I mean, it looks like that boardroom is really, was a special place upstairs. If we could, you know, save some of that wood and reclaim that, or save, you know, brick and rebuild inside, I mean, we're willing to do all kinds of things, but as the building stands right now, I don't feel that it can be saved.
If I could speak to that, there is--
Of course.
--a tension in historic preservation where people who demolish historic structures then save token bricks, or if you go down on Walker, you can see the bus station that we fought over that was demolished, and then now they put in what looks like a casket. I mean, it's just, it's offensive to those--
Well, we wouldn't do anything without the women's advice.
When you say, wouldn't it be cool if we saved some bricks and, you know, put it in just a token, it just, some of that, some of that is, is hard for people who are historic preservation advocates and have an emotional connection with the property and its history. When you take just a few token bricks and put it up on a wall or something like that, doesn't, that doesn't replace, that doesn't make--
Yes, sir.
--the pay to demolish historic structures. And then do the, you know, with our guilt, we put up a few bricks and we call it good.
In all actuality, it's eligible for historic status. It's, it's not a historic stat, building as it stands.
It is historic, obviously, for the reasons that was presented to some people, whether it has legal status.
I understand, okay.
It has historic meaning over many, many decades, and--
And so does the Care Center, in my opinion. I mean, I under, I get it, and I understand, and I don't want to cheapen their movement or their organization or that building. I don't want to do that at all, but as the building owner, I'm trying to move forward with the agenda of helping Oklahoma County's children, and, I mean, we've done extensive research and efforts to try, try to make those best decisions, and that's what brings us here today. And I, I'm so open to, if the women wanted to be a part of that decision-making process, sure, I don't want to suggest that saving bricks or anything that's important. What is important, and what would you guys like to see? What, what would, what would be an honor for them? And they can help us with that. I have no problem opening up that area, that building, for them to use forever and ever, and helping us design what it would look like.
You know, I actually think we have a lot more in common here than we have separating us--
Absolutely.
--as you listen to this conversation. And I don't feel like, personally, it's my own opinion, I'm not sure it's very productive for us to be debating design or around this horseshoe. That wasn't what we were here for. We were really here to say whether or not we deemed the building to be historic. I think we would be much better, you all would be much better served to meet with the women and sit down and talk about a plan that could work for everybody and honor the work and--
We'd look back--
--hold together the work that you both are doing, because--
We're here because of Councilwoman Nice's resolution.
--as Councilwoman Nice says, it's, it's common, it's a common mission to work with the children in the community. So I don't think we resolve anything here further by continuing to--
Maybe now's a good time to make an observation that I've sort of happened upon as we've been sitting here. So we are being asked to consider, asked by Councilwoman Nice to consider this resolution. So this is actually a really well-written resolution and, and very elegantly handled, especially at the meat of it, which is the resolution at the end. So the whereas is are all background, but obviously, the, the point that we're trying to make is in the now therefore be it resolved. And if you'll go with me for a second, I'd like to point out something. So now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Oklahoma City, that the former Brockway Center is of great historic and cultural significance and should be maintained as a testament to the merging of the old and the new, and the continued recognition of the importance of this great beacon to raising the level of women and children to the highest plane in the home morally, socially, spiritually, economically, and civically. That is it. There is a reference in the title to, that the structure should never be demolished, but I brought this to Kenny's attention, because a title is not what we are passing. A title is a staff-handled summary of the resolution. What we are passing is the resolution, and the resolution, it, the now therefore be it resolved part of it, really can encompass all of the things that we've talked about. It's, it's a very compromised language, I should say. And, and so I don't know that what we're being asked to pass today in the language of the resolution, first of all, it was already established, we're not the decision-making body on the demolition permit, but even in an advisory capacity, we're really just being asked to acknowledge the historic nature of the Brockway Center and to find a way to merge the old and the new. We're not being asked here in the language of the, plain language of the resolution to weigh in on the demolition or not demolition. That's in the title, which arguably is an error, really, a staff error.
Yes, the, the title is actually supposed to reflect the resolution, and the resolution does not say should never be demolished. It should be maintained as a testament to the merging of the old and the new, and--
And I apologize, that just sort of happened upon that today as I'm sitting here reading this resolution in great detail. I don't know, Councilwoman Nice, if you have any reaction to that. I, I didn't have any time to bring that to your attention earlier, because I just noticed it, but--
I don't have the one before me, in front of me, from our last council meeting to see if anything has changed, but again, the purpose of this is to acknowledge the work, the commitment, the forming of this organization and these women who have done great things, not only in our community, but our great state, as well as our nation, who continue to serve our nation. And I, with our meeting on Thursday, we amicably agree that the women should be honored in that reserve.
Absolutely.
And, and I, again, that's, that has never been the argument for us when it comes to even having this discussion, and that was, again, what I said at our last meeting, that is, that has never been, what I have wanted to do is to cause dissension in any place within the ward or any organizations that are doing wonderful things, not just to benefit our city, but actual communities that are within Ward Seven. So that's obviously something that's near and dear to me, because this is Ward Seven that I represent at the end. So again, as long as we're honoring the legacy, and it has been through the state to say it is historical, so I believe as a city, we should also acknowledge that is, it has, it has reference as far as being a place that is very significant to the City of Oklahoma City.
Yes, I think your resolving clause does that exactly what you want to do.
And it has not been changed, right? It should--
No, it hasn't been changed at all.
Yeah, okay.
And to make it the title accurate, we really should strike that last, after the semicolon should be stricken.
But that's not a, that's a staff action, right? Title creation, that's not something we amend. We don't amend titles, we amend resolutions, correct?
We can amend the title to reflect--
Wow.
--the resolution accurately.
Now you're wading us into what I was trying to take us out of. Kenny, what do you--
I, I know.
I said, "we" as in staff. Oh, okay.
Kenny, we look at the now therefore clause on the second page, and the language says and should be maintained as a testament. What does that mean?
Should, well, it's a, should be maintained as a testament to the merging of the old and new. It's, it's not shall, it's not will, so it's not mandatory. It's basically, it kind of expresses the idea that the parties should work together to try to maintain the historic structure of it.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor--
Yes, sir.
--on that should be, Kenny, on, I'm talking about the one now, therefore be it resolved, where it talks about the former Brockway Center, great historical, cultural significance, and should be maintained?
Yes.
Okay. What happens if I add a caveat in there to the effect that, if feasible?
You can move that as an amendment if you want, yes.
Does that, does that give me any more?
I would, I would love for Councilwoman Nice to be, sorry, he's suggesting an amendment, and I'd wanted you to be a part of this conversation. Can you repeat that?
Well, what, what consequences do we incur by leaving this written the way it is, should be maintained? Because it could come up in the future. You don't know, I don't know, that that is not the most feasible way or desirable way to accomplish the goal. Have I tied my hands by saying should be, or should I give myself some flexibility? That's my question.
In actuality, should be does not tie your hands, because it's not mandatory. It's--
It would have to say shall. Well, I would also say, this states that the former Brockway Center is of great historic and cultural significance and should be maintained as a testament to the merging of the new and the continued-- I don't, I mean, I could fit what they're proposing into that sentence, you know? I mean, it's, I think, these are very soft, this is very soft language, besides even the should, the use of should instead of shall, so. I don't think, before, before I got your attention, he had suggested adding the words if feasible, and I don't even know that that's necessary. if feasible, and I don't even know that that's necessary, in my view, to encompass all the different possibilities that were discussed today. My personal view, I mean, words, I know, I recognize words have meaning, but these words are so seemingly carefully chosen as to mean just about whatever you want them to mean.
Yes, the thing I would say is, I want Nikki to be able to have the language she wants in it, and she's not a lawyer. And you've mentioned some stuff that's in the title that's not in the body of the resolution, and so, this may be something that to, to present what she wants presented, needs to have some more discussion with the lawyers and, and see if it needs to be revised to have the exact language that she's attempting to have in the resolution.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that means we need to defer one more time?
If I may, one of the challenges we have is differentiating between the current old and the new. And so, I don't know if all of you have seen the building, but that might be, if we're going to defer, that might be to your benefit to see the building and for a better understanding of what construction has happened since it was the Brockway House.
I think that's a great idea, and I think it's a great idea that the parties keep talking to each other. We've only had one conversation.
And obviously, the women of the Federated Women's Club would love to be a part, they just gave me the thumbs up, so they would love to be a part of that tour as well to, to make sure, again, we're, we're bringing all of those ideals and also that history and the legacy for both, the CARE Center as well as the Brockway Center together. So, therefore, I ask that we defer.
Second. All right.
Thank you very much.
We got a.
And again, thank you CARE Center for all that you do.
Alaska.
Thank you very much. Change to the women, thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Nice is, that deferral to the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, the deferral to the next meeting motion is second, is on the table. Any further discussion? See none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Yeah. Okay, we'll go around the horseshoe. Councilmen, stone suffer.
The only thing I would like to say is that I would encourage everyone that's watching this program to go out and vote today. It would be very meaningful.
I would also say, please make sure you vote today. Always good to exercise our right to vote. A couple of things, I know February 19th, we're going to be having a presentation about how to do business with the city, and while it's open, and we're specifically targeting Ward Seven residents or people that live within Ward Seven that want to understand how to get that contract or, or how they can be a part of that process, we definitely want to make sure all people of Oklahoma City are, are able to understand the process as well. So, we have our staff from Oklahoma City that will also be representing in this effort, and it begins at 10:00 a.m. on February the 19th, so I hope we will spread the word for that. And I also want to make mention, you know, there was, there was some, there were some comments made, I guess this past weekend, about maybe my integrity of, of what I do and what I have done thus far, as far as helping to make sure that the community is empowered and understands the process of what's going on and also providing transparency. And I'll say, I, I'm not ashamed of doing that, and I will not be ashamed of letting my community know what's going on in the community, letting them know about meetings, and also helping them to understand the process of what's happening in the community. So, if that is what I'll be charged with because I'm doing what the people of Ward Seven have elected and asked me to do, so be it. Thank you.
I'm going to ditto the comments, please, about everybody going out to vote. It's incredibly important, and I hope everybody will exercise their right to do so.
Councilwoman Nice and I will be attending a function with the KIP Charter Schools this evening, trying to find out if we are indeed smarter than a KIPster. I won't speak for Councilwoman Nice, but with me, it's, there's not a lot of suspense there, I'm probably.
There's a, there's a, there's a pool in the rest of the council between the two of you, just so you know.
We'll be Googling a lot.
So, anyway, I just, I wanted to mention that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
If you are in one of the four wards with an election today, please go out and vote.
Craig, do you think you could get together a list of mayor and council salaries in peer cities? I think we might have done this in years past, I might have asked for this in years past, but I can't remember.
Can certainly take a look at that.
I mean, like, a couple of weeks, would that be too fast?
No, I think we can get that done.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Okay, and I will, I'd like to piggyback if I may, I recognize I'm not necessarily in, out of, in office of the mayor at the moment, but I just piggyback and, and add my support to what Councilwoman Nice said earlier, and I believe and support what she's doing and her efforts at transparency and involving her community, and I certainly think very highly of her integrity as well, so. Let us move now to city manager reports, item 12. We've got A through F, and you're going to whip right through those, right, Craig? Mr. City Manager?
First up, we have Mike Carrier with our convention visitors' report.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. It's a pleasure to be working with you now, and glad to, glad to have you on board. It was a lot of fun working with Jim, and I know that we will continue that same thing under your administration, so. I know you all have the, the report in front of you, I'll hit a couple of highlights real quickly. Through the first half of the year, we are, are very close to being on track in terms of meeting our goals for the year. It's not unusual because once you hit about the middle of November, a lot of things slow down dramatically in terms of the decision-making process, but they are indeed picking up. Today, as a matter of fact, we have two of our salespeople in Washington, D.C., attending a major trade show up there, and while they are there, there's a, a meeting taking place in an office in D.C. of one of the associations where we are in contention for a significant national convention, and it's between us and Kansas City. So, hopefully, in the, in fact, I just, I texted our director of sales who's up there, and so far, no word, but that's not a bad thing right now, so. But this would be one of the, this would actually be the first major national convention to, to select Oklahoma City for the new convention center, so. Things are happening and happening well. We're well over halfway toward our goal in terms of the number of leads, that's potential business that we are now continuing to work. We have, we've identified over 24 conventions and meetings specifically for the new convention center through the first half of this year. We're working RFPs for those. Omni is on board, SMG is on board, and so, continuing to work with those folks to, to respond to those requests for proposals and move the process forward. Our customer advisory board, which is made up of a dozen national meeting planners and site selection experts in the, in the industry, will be here the first part of, of March to meet with us. We meet with them about every nine months, and not only are they here to help us and us to relay things to them, but some of these folks are seriously looking at us for future meetings. And so, them being here and being able to see the work that has happened on the convention center is very important. The last time they were here was, was when we had groundbreaking. So, there's a significant difference over on the east side of the park between the day we did groundbreaking and today. We also have a fan trip planned for later this spring where we'll be inviting 12 to 18 additional national meeting planners to come in, see Oklahoma City, see what else is going on here, and talk about their needs. Seventeen industry trade shows, 38 leads, that is where we actually have an RFP for business. Again, some of that is for the convention center, some of it is for other venues here in town. 279 prospects, those are people that have said, we're interested in Oklahoma City, but we're not ready to give you an RFP. Those are the folks that my sales team will be continuing to follow up with, to see when those RFPs will come out and make sure that we're involved in those. On the equine front, we had a great fall season with our horse shows, a lot of good activity there. We just had this past weekend the National Raining Horse Association's annual convention and board meeting. Those folks are very, very pleased, obviously, they're headquartered here in Oklahoma City, and they had a great fall show, looking forward to their Derby, which will be held in June this year, and so, some good things going on in the equine front. Overall tourism is doing very, very well. We look forward to beginning of spring break, that's when things really begin to kick off for the, the spring and summer season. We're seeing a lot of interest, our website up over 7% through the first half of the year in terms of views and use of our website. It's notable, a few years ago, our industry had kind of a, a pause because of social media. Travel writers have long been a great asset for us, magazines and other publications that, that did travel stories, and that kind of died because the print industry sort of went through a, a, a loss of, of confidence and a loss of business. Now, with social media and things that have developed there, we're seeing tremendous results in terms of pitched stories and media that we're able to pick up through social media, and it is continuing to be a great asset for us. So, things are looking good for the second half of the year, we're excited about it, we are pleased to see what has happened, we are enjoying the opportunity to work with the director of sales at the Omni, director of sales at the convention center, and be able to respond to all those inquiries that we have and continue to move forward. So, thank you all for your continued support and look forward to, to a good spring and moving it as we move into 2020. So, if you have any questions.
Any questions you'd like? Okay.
Thank you all.
So, next up, we have our council priorities quarterly, about quarterly, sometimes moves. We try to, we try to review the priorities, and so, Doug's going to do a quick overview here, or quick introduction. This one is promoting safe and secure thriving and thriving neighborhoods. There's really two sides of it, one is the public safety side, the other is kind of the community development. We'll hear from Aubrey and Bob Teener at another meeting where we'll get a continued update on this.
Right, as Craig said, we're going to focus in on public safety today, and so, we've got a number of indicators that are just related to public safety. I'm going to touch on the very first one here, the IMSA response time, and this is the response time within 10 minutes and 59 seconds for priority one, their life emergency calls. They're at 90.6% through this current year. The last couple of years, they've been right around that 90% mark. This is without exclusion, so IMSA contracts for emergency service with a, a private party to provide that service, and as part of their contract, they have to achieve 90% response time, but they get exclusions for things like bad weather or a high call volume, that sort of stuff. What we report on here is, does not have any exclusions in it, so this is what the public is actually experiencing, no matter what the circumstances are. So, again, we're right at about 90% response time within their standard of 1059. And so, that's our first measure here is on, is on IMSA. Now, I'll turn it over to Chief City to talk about some of our police measures.
So, in supporting the council's priorities, the police department will, will go through a few things. I want to thank Deputy Chief Becker, he's worked on this along with our planning staff, and also Mike Streep, our business manager, has also worked on these LFR measurements and those types of things. So, first one we're going to have, we're going to look at is homicides. You can see we're at 2018, these are actual numbers. Most of the numbers you're going to see in here are going to be an estimated number because we only have counts up to either September or November of, of 18, but this one is actual, 2018, and we have 52 homicides, which you can see is considerably less than what we had in 2017. The, if you, if you're interested, our current homicides for this year, 19, or we're sitting at 13. This time last year, we were at 11, so we're too, too higher than we were last year, so, you know, it's, it's going to take 12 months to determine whether or not, you know, we were able to, to keep, keep our homicides down. Actually, what I look at more closely is assaults, and I'll get into that a little bit better as far as what our trends are. Here, you can see rapes, and these are based on our UCR numbers, the ones that we report to the FBI, report to the state and go to, go to, go to the FBI, who accumulate those on a national basis. You can see where our rapes are up, there's about 76 more, we anticipate. These are, these are numbers that we estimate it up through 2018, once we get all the count in. You can see where we've gone up about, there's probably about 76 more of those. There could be a lot of reasons for that, it's up nationally, rape is up nationally, really across the board in all municipalities or, or large municipalities we compare ourselves to. There could be a lot of reasons for that, a lot of, a lot of the municipalities, the discussions are having is that there, there's just more awareness, and as you can see, since 2011, it's, rapes have gradually gone up, but contributed a lot of that to really, there have been some federal law changes in relationship to reporting, it's included other people, but it also includes, it also, awareness is much better, and we think there's more reporting. So, it's not all bad news because we want them reported, we can't deal with them if it's not reported, and I think a lot more with a lot of the movements, a lot of the awareness that, that more women are actually reporting, but all people are reporting those crimes. So, it's not necessarily all bad.
So, do you think it's, I mean, I mean, it looks like it's about to double, but do you think it's actually doubled, or that's change in reporting?
Doubled from last year or doubled from?
From 2011.
Right. Do I think it's actually doubled?
Or is it, or is it reporting and?
No, I think the reporting has a lot, has to have a lot to do with that. I think there's just much more awareness, there's much more awareness with domestic violence, the sexual assaults, you know, with abuse towards women and those types of things. I just think there's a lot more freedom now, a lot more awareness, a lot, being a lot more comfortable with reporting those types of crimes, I feel like they're supported. I feel like there's a lot more support. A lot of it had to do with, you know, just feeling like, you know, they were ignored, and I think we're, as a society, we're doing a much better job, excuse me, of recognizing those and, and really asking and supporting those people that have been sexually assaulted. I know, I know police departments are doing a much better job in interviewing and actually investigating those types of crimes.
Chief, that's a pretty scary graph. Are you saying that you're seeing that in comparable cities where it looks the same?
Yes, yeah. Most of what you're going to see in statistics, you're going to see, you're going to see an increase in several areas, but in, in rapes, that is, that's a pretty steady, that's pretty normal. But for, and we try to compare ourselves to cities, not a national rate, but cities our size, a large city, a large agency, and that's pretty consistent, it's actually going up overall nationally, even with smaller cities included. But again, I think it has to do with a lot of reporting, I don't think it's all, it's not all bad. I think it's, we want people to report those, and for the longest time, we know that there's, there's crimes that go unreported just because of the embarrassment, not wanting to have, feeling like they're being victimized twice by the system, and I think we're doing a better job of making, taking care of our victims in that regard.
So, having a place like Palomar or?
Yeah, exactly, it's a good example. You know, we always explain, we started Palomar, we started domestic violence, and the awareness goes up, we'll probably, our numbers will probably go up. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, we want people to report it and feel comfortable reporting it, because we can't help them if they don't report it.
Hey, Chief, could you go back to homicides real quick?
Uh huh.
I get an email every time there's a homicide, thank you for that, but I got 62 emails in 2018, do you think that's just a typo or?
Sixty, we have 62, actually, what we report to UCR and what we report to you is actual murders. So, we have this title homicides, it's not totally correct, but that's what we report in LFR, and that's what we report nationally. Homicides are the killing of one person by another, so when an officer actually shoots somebody and kills them, it may be justified, but it's not counted in these numbers.
Okay.
So, our 62 number actually includes, will include for, for 2018, it includes five officer-involved shootings, it includes three justifiable homicides by citizens, those aren't reflected in those numbers.
Got it, okay, good to know, thank you.
So, the next, the next slide we're looking at is robberies. Again, it's a national trend, and robberies are down. I can't, I can't tell you exactly why, but, but robberies are down. I would, I would, I would think it probably has a lot to do with technology, a lot more video, a lot more, we're actually capturing a lot more people on camera. Our video investigations that we have, if we look at that, in fact, we're hiring, we're doing a pilot program of hiring some part-time retired officers to go out and retrieve the video because it's so numerous and voluminous now that, and we need them for those investigations, but they also help us. You can see them, we post them on Crime Stoppers, we post them on Facebook, asking, asking the public, so that, I think that technology has actually lowered that on a national trend. But again, we're, we're, we're pretty on target. Now, the one, probably want to talk about a little bit are assaults, aggravated assaults, which are our serious. are our serious assaults. You can see where this trend has, has gone up, I mean significantly. We have about 60 more. We anticipate having about 60 more aggravated assaults than we did last year. You can see that in 2012, we peaked in 2012. And then between 2012 and 13, we were able to decrease that by 13%. And it's been on a decline since about 2015. But we're seeing that trend upward now in our assaults. And it's, the trend is not, what, what we participate in with major city chiefs is we report our assaults on a regular basis with the major city chiefs. There's about 67 major city chiefs. These are, these are cities over 500,000 population. And now we participate in that in trying to capture more accurate data, because there's really always an issue with UCR and comparables because everybody measures things differently. So what we do is we participate in that. And really, within the last, within the last year, in 2018, if you look at all 67 major city chiefs, and these are, these are major cities over 500,000, out of all, out of 67 of them, 43% assaults were up. We're one of that 43%. So you're getting towards almost half. So there's a trend in a lot of the major cities for assaults to constantly, that are going up right now. And I like to look at, look at that as more of a red flag than I do homicides, because homicides fluctuate, although you can compare homicides more easily between one city and another because it's, everybody classifies or defines homicides the same. And that's easy to define. Aggravated assaults is not quite so easy to define. Different, different states call aggravated assault, you know, define it differently. So the comparison is not always apples to apples, but with, why we've defined it with major city chiefs, the numbers we're looking at, it's a good way to really for us to gauge ourselves with other cities, because these are the largest cities in the United States to participate in this and counting it. So we're, about 43% of those cities have actually gone up. The other percentage is either they're pretty close and stable with not a lot of change, or they're, or they're, or they're a little bit lower. I didn't find any that are considerably lower across, across the board there. And so you can see really between 2012 and 2018, we had about a six, which I would consider recent evaluation, we have about a 6.5% increase in, in our assaults. And it's something we have to be aware of and we track as far as what areas of the city. And I think adding, hopefully adding more police officers like we have, like the council's authorized, with the increase in sales tax, we get those officers on the street and can target some of the areas where we have the most serious crime. A lot of it's gang-related, most of it's firearms-related. And hopefully, we can address some of that and maybe lower it, or at least maintain it to some, some degree. Any other questions?
If my numbers are right, that's about 10 a day.
Pardon?
That's about 10 a day.
Yeah.
If my numbers are correct.
Yeah. And I would be reluctant to send you all the assaults over a significant incident because it would, it would kind of scare you. Because there's, I mean assaults, a lot of them are minor. We have a lot of minor assaults, fights and things like that. Mostly aggravated assaults, like I said, these are the most serious ones. These are firearms. Not all firearms. Could be a baseball bat, could be a knife, could be a lot of different things. So, but again, you know, what I say about homicide is homicide is, is an assault with the, with the worst outcome. I mean, all these have potential to be homicides. It's whether or not how medical services or whether or not they get medical attention or so forth. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's the one that bothers me the most. It's the one I like to track and watch that trend because it really kind of goes towards how, how, how our homicide rates can end up going, how a lot of other crime is going to end up going. A lot of it's drug-related. A lot of the aggravated assaults are drug-related. And we target, we try to target a lot of the large organizations, a lot of violent crime organizations. And we've done a pretty good job working with the FBI to do that. So we have some things in place and, you know, you can, you know, there's things you can do to lower it. And a lot of it, in the end, is boots on the ground. It's keeping, keeping enough visibility out there and attention to what's going on. The officers out there working the streets. So the next slide, you know, reporting aggravated assaults. Again, all this is going to tell you is when we, when we, when we set this, you know, our goal was like in 2014, we set it at reducing it 5%. We were on trade, we were reducing it about 3% or so, if you can see the previous chart. But we're not reaching that goal, and we won't reach that goal. So, but, but that's what it is right now. The target was in 19 to have it down to 3, 3258, 3,258. I'm pretty sure at this rate, we're not going to reach that goal. And we'll have to evaluate what our responses and stuff are to that. So if you look at our, the national average, we look at clearance rates, and we track that. We also report that to, to UCR, to the FBI. What's, if, what I want you to look at here is really what, the national average comparable agencies, those are agencies that are more our size. If you look at the national average, that includes all agencies, including small ones. It's, if you have a smaller number of crimes, you're going to have a higher percentage of solvability. So what I really like to look at is, is the national average for comparable agencies, and then look at us at OCPD through 2008. You can see what our percentage is in homicide. And what's interesting about this chart, if you want to go back and compare it to those two areas in which we've had increases, which is aggravated assaults and rape, you can see it also that our solvability rate is lower. So I have to consider, I have to, I have to probably anecdotally determine probably that the reason our solve, solve rates are lower is because our cases are, we have more cases. So you have the same number of investigators, but you have more cases. You need investigators with a proper amount of case, cases to work to be able to solve these cases. So if they're getting more cases like they are in aggravated assaults and rape, we're probably going to have somewhat of a lower solvability rate on that. So normally, we're higher. You can see right now, as far as rapes go, we're at 31% through November of 2018, where the, the national average for comparable cities is 35. Now, we're not way off from that, considering the number of cases that we work. But you can see in 2017, we had a 48% solid, solid clearance rate compared to that national average of 35. So we're, we're quite a bit lower this year. But I, again, I think it's going to be contributed to, to the increase in numbers and cases that we're having. So the next slide, we, obviously, we take off the surveys the city does every year. Our target has always been 55. We did that in 2005 as our benchmark. That's what it was in 2005 when we started leading for results. So we've made, we've kept it there to kind of measure ourself on how we're doing. Where you can see in 13, we were at 58. And in 18, we're at 50, which is actually 2% higher than what we were in 16 and 17, but not quite as high as, as 14 and 15. So the next, the next slide will show you our response time for life-threatening calls. These are the most serious calls. And we set the standard of nine minutes and 30 seconds from the time the 911 call comes in. That means the call's answered and then delivered to the officer in the field, and then we respond to it. A total of nine minutes and 30 seconds. And that's, that's kind of, that's kind of the best way for us to gauge that, whether or not we're doing a good response time or not. Priority one calls are life-threatening. When you can see, we can see last two years, we've been at 73%, 18 and 19. So we've venced up. The idea is if we put more officers on the street to answer calls, those response times are going to come down. Theoretically, that's what we hope to do. Any questions? Any further questions?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here today and just give a brief overview of your fire department and our involvement in ensuring that our residents live in a safe and secure community with thriving neighborhoods. Before I get into it, I would like to recognize my command staff real quick for their support and efforts of what they do in this every day. I have my deputy chiefs here at the back, Deputy Chief Mike Walker, Tony Davis, and Harold Thompson, and my business manager who put this together, Clint Regir. So I appreciate their support and efforts and everything that they do every day. Real quick on this, you'll see the first slides that we have, our key measures in operational services and dispatch. I'm going to get to them in more detail. So we'll go ahead and move to the next slide. That we're looking at here is, these are our actual incidents, and we're looking at fiscal year 2010. And you can see where we're at in 2019. And you'll see some trends and changes. And I want to talk a little bit about those real quick. The average of our incidents that we respond to, about 70% of those are EMS-related. So you can see that's the majority of our calls. And you'll see that's depicted there in the graph in blue. You'll see that our, our red incidence is about 25%. And that actually is our other calls, which includes agency assist, automatic alarms, where we respond to alarms in buildings, down power lines, elevator rescues, those type of incidents. And then the green area there is about four, three to 4% of our calls, and that is our actual fire calls that we respond to. And that's our structure fires, wildland urban interface fires, rubbish fires, trash fires, vehicle fires. So you can see, that's what our response looks like. You'll kind of notice there in 2012, in June, we actually started CAD-to-CAD implementation. That was very important, where we could share information in our CAD systems all amongst the public safety agencies that allow us to see what's going on responding to a call that has PD information, that has EMS information, allows us to share that. And that allowed us to move in, in November 2013, you can see that, that chart decreased there from 88,000 calls to 71,000 calls. And that was due to our medical priority dispatching system protocol. And what we did is we implemented a protocol system that when the call came in, we would make a determination if it was a life-threatening call. We call them Charlie, Delta, and Echo calls. If we have a life-threatening call, then the fire department will respond. We feel that's a better use of our resources to take care of our citizens, citizens and residents, to make sure that we're in service and we can respond to the higher priority calls. So you can see that. We've had a pretty consistent trend. You can tell from fiscal year 15 to 19, we're averaging about the 75,000 calls. And we're trying to, we continually monitor that MPDS to see if there's anything that we're responding to that we shouldn't be, so we can evaluate that constantly. The next thing we'll look at is our dispatch times. This is very important for us because when someone calls 911, we want to make sure that we answer it in a quick and efficient manner, and we get that dispatched. So what we're looking at here is our, and you'll notice there's fire and IMSA dispatching and talking about our call takers and our times. We actually report that in two different measures. You can see the red line depicted there in the bar graph is our fire, and that's our dispatchers that actually get that call and dispatch a fire call. And then the blue line depicts the IMSA. And the reason there's a disparity in the times and the, and the percentages is when it actually goes to a medical call, it goes through IMSA, and they actually prioritize that in that medical priority dispatching. They ask questions to see if it's a high priority call, and then they give it to fire, and we dispatch it. So that's why there's a little bit lower percentage in that. We don't actually have control in that side of it. What I mean in that is, it has to go through the algorithm. It has to go through the questions before they give it to fire. So we really monitor that, and we pay attention to it because we want to make sure that we're doing well in that area, or we're asking questions, or making sure that we address that. If you look on the fire side, we're, we're seeing a steady increase since fiscal year 13 to where we are today. Very happy to report that. Our goal was still to be in one minute or less 90% of the time. We're at 85% right now this year. I'm happy to say in January, we actually had our highest was at 88.32%. So we're continually monitoring that. We're making sure we actually look at each individual dispatcher. We look at their times, so we're able to show them what they're doing and what they're achieving. We can address that through training and other measures. So we want to make sure that we continually monitor this, because that's very important for those that call 911, that we're taking care of that in a timely manner. This right here is another area we want to address, and this is something we have control of, and this is called our out-of-shoot. Some people call it turnout times in the fire service. And this is our goal, that we're out of the fire station when someone calls us and the lights come on, that we get out in one minute or less, 60 seconds or less, 90% of the time. Now, the NFPA standard in this actually says 60 seconds or less for a medical call, which is 70% of our calls, or 80 seconds or less for a fire or other call. And we all, we have just said, we're going to do 60 seconds or less in all of our calls. So I'm happy to report we're right at 90% for that. We're at 89.93. We feel this is an area we control. When the lights come on, we need to get on the apparatus and go out of the station. And you, and you see this sharp change in that. The reason is, we actually started monitoring it. In the years past, the assumption was, we get out of the fire station in a quick and efficient manner. Well, now with data analytics, we can look at it, we can actually show where we're at. Our officers actually report this every month in their, in their monthly goals. So they see it. We compare it to other stations across the city. So it's kind of that self-awareness. And you can see the changes it's made. They want to do a good job. When they see where they're at, they really focus on that. So that's very positive, and we're happy to see that we're seeing those improvements. This measure here is our five minutes from dispatch till we get on scene. This is the actual time that the lights come on, our fire company gets out of the station, and they arrive on scene. This measure has consistently stayed around 59% on average. You can see in phys, in 19, we're looking a little bit above that for our fire calls, which is in red at 60.78%. And then we're around the 59% for EMS. As we reported, that we've really focused on getting out of the fire station in a quick and efficient manner. The rest of that is travel time. So we have challenges in our travel time. So we're really looking at everything we can do to improve that. We're actually looking at the ATMS systems, which is advanced traffic management systems. We're seeing, is there anything that we could utilize the technology that's out there to improve? So we're, we're monitoring that right now. We're looking at options. We also use our data analytics to see if there's things that can help us in this. So we're continually monitoring this. This is very important because, as I've reported in the past, we are an ISO rated one fire department. It's the highest rating you can get. That's our insurance services organization rating. And a lot of that is attributed to our response time. So we have to continually monitor that. So in that travel time that we're talking about, that four minutes, we're going to continually focus on that, because we know that when our, when our residents call 911, we want to get there in a quick and efficient manner. So we're going to continually monitor that and make sure that we're trying to meet these measures. This is our strategic result. And you'll notice this one here says all fire responses within seven minutes, 70% of the time. Now, the reason you have the seven minutes and the five minutes, the seven minutes takes into account the actual dispatch time. So when they call, when we pick up 911, till we arrive on scene, that's what this time is. And we like to report this because it tells the full story. So when, when our residents call 911 and we show up their house, we know that we should be able to do that. Our goal is seven minutes or less 70% of the time. So it's important that they see that and that we also continually monitor that. As you can see, here is our target. And when we started really looking at this in FY13, we were challenging, again, we were getting into the analytics, wanted to say, why are we not achieving this? We started looking at one area, we started talking about was our dispatch, getting it out in that one minute or less, looking at that. The other part was our out-of-shoot times. And you see, as we started to focus on that, in FY15, we really started to see an increase. We, we have that increase that's moved up to 16, 17, and where we're 18, and where we're looking at estimates for 19. They're right in that 65% range. So what that challenge is, we're looking at saying, okay, we've done, we've met, we're working our dispatch, we're, we're trying to achieve the high levels there, our out-of-shoot times are starting to meet our goals. What other areas can we address? And that's where I talked about the travel time. So when we start looking at the big picture in this, we want to focus on all those areas and say, how can we achieve that? Not just building the fire stations in strategic locations, because that's obvious what we want to do going forward. But also look at, what do we have now in our current system, and how do we improve that? So we're looking at all those and making sure that we can meet those obligations that we have to our residents. I'm still happy that we have a 7% increase in that. So we've seen that balance at 65%. We want to continue to work on that. One of the areas that's near and dear to us that we look at for a safe and secure city is our fire fatalities. And we look at per 100,000 residents, and I'll talk about that more in detail. We also look at the number of fire department community risk reduction activities. These are things that we do in a community to try to reduce the risk to them. Making sure they have smoke alarms, making sure that they practice exit drills in the home, making sure that they know how to effectively call 911 and what to do when they call. So we look at all these things together. It's not just one thing. It's how do we get that community buy-in so we have shareholders that are working with us to achieve this? It's not just what we do, it's how we do this as a community. We're looking at our number of smoke alarms distributed to residents. We've really taken this serious, and I'll talk about the numbers that we've seen the increase. We put them up to code, free of charge. We really focus on that area. And then our percentage of elementary school, public schools in Oklahoma City limits receiving fire and life safety presentations. It's very important from a young age that we instill this in our, in our kids. We actually, for years, our focus was second grade. I'm really happy to report now, we've brought in our LFR measure there, and we want to look at not just second graders, all elementary kids. So we're looking at K through fifth grade, and we want to also expand that to, to the young adults and start doing more and more with that. So I'm happy that this measure has really grown. This is our first year, so we'll see how that goes, and not just addressing the, the second graders. Unfortunately, we, in the last couple of years, we've had several very tough years in our fire fatalities. You can attribute to a lot of different things. But again, we're going to continue to work with our community on this. The current standard for this is 1.03 per 100,000. The current standard for this is one point oh three per hundred thousand residents, as reported by the US Fire Administration, they look nationally in that. So if you look in, in two thousand and eighteen, we had twenty-one fatalities, this year we're at eight. So that put us in in two thousand and eighteen at two, two point four five, so we was way above that one point oh three. And then this year, year to date, we're at one point two three. So we recognize this is an issue. Last year, we had a lot of issues with smoke alarms. All of our fire fatalities and structure fires, but one did not have a working smoke alarm. So we recognized that was an issue. This year, some of our challenges we've seen is not the early notification as much through smoke alarms, it's getting out of the house. We actually coming over here this morning, we had a structure fire that came in, we actually had trapped occupants and the occupant had to climb out a window before our arrival. So that just goes to focus that not only is important to have a working smoke alarm, it's important to have an exit drill. How do you get out? And that you practice that with your family, not you take it for granted. And we look at this and we say, not if it will happen, but when it happens. So we have to go on that preface and say, we have to focus on this in our community and garner that buy-in with the community. It's not just us talking about it, how do we get them involved in that? So we're really focused in that area. One of the areas that we look at, as we said, is smoke alarm. Smoke alarm installation is incredible because it allows us to be in the residence, it allows us to talk to them, not just put up a smoke alarm, but talk to them about what to do when their house catches on fire. So you can see the sharp increase that we've had here and we're really excited about that because we want to make sure that we're making a safe and secure community that we all live in. If you look in FY sixteen and seventeen, we were averaging about three thou, three hundred a month for installs and you can see the totals there. In eighteen, we jumped to about five fifty a month. And in this year, we're on average about seven hundred a month. And that's important because we've partnered with great organizations like Red Cross, so they help us out if we have a significant incident, we go out and canvass an area. We actually have partnered with our explorer program, our fire explorer program, they actually have an event where they go out and do that in the community. And then we just go out, every time we make a medical call, we're in someone's house or we're at their residence, we tell them, we tell our firefighters, ask if they have a smoke alarm, can they check it? Can we put one up for you? So that's a continued focus on everything we do if we're out in the community and what we're doing. We want to make sure that we have a working smoke alarm, they know what to do when it goes off, they have exit drills in the home, and they know how to call nine one one when they get out at their meeting place. So it's very, these are very important for us to ensure that we have a safe and secure community going forward. With that, I'll entertain any questions, but I appreciate your continued support of public safety and everything you do, so thank you so much. Any questions? Thank you.
So we have three other reports that are on. We have the revenue enforcement report, a program report, the quarterly investment report, and the hotel tax collections, and we'd like to answer your questions on that if you have any.
Okay, and more detail on all of that can be found as well as claims and payroll on our website by clicking through the agenda at OKC.gov. All right, that brings us to citizens to be heard. We have two who have signed up. First was John Bates. John, if you come to the center podium, state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
I have head injuries, I talk a little slow. How are you? My name is John Bates. I was here a year ago in January there, complaining about horrible treatment by the OKCPD. I drink a lot mainly because of this treatment. I drank responsibly at my house, I have a head injury. I was in high school, I was in a coma for nine days, so that makes me the weaker kid, something these people swore to protect. Why do we have detox if I never get taken there? I've been once in five years and that's because I had witnesses. I get taken to jail so they can add a resisting arrest charge and fabricate my rap sheet. You can't, if you can't handle a drunk and take him to detox, you're in the wrong job. I ain't got no car, so I walk everywhere. I got arrested walking home from Nick's lumber, Nick's hardware lumber store, where I had a garden tool sharpened because I had a log to cut at my mom's house where I also live. Oh, I live there, where I also live, but I don't drink because of the rules. I also have a sprained ankle, so I don't know how, how any cop could tell I was drunk. I'm going to court February twenty-sixth to argue my case. Since I have a head injury, I need to be breathalyzer tested every time because I don't walk straight, no matter what, couldn't walk a line if I wanted to. If I wanted to, what are my rights? Because I've never heard them read. Is it the same as on TV? Also, cops had the wrong social security number for me and I had to take my social security card to the docket counter and have it changed. That's all I have to say. I've been, I got arrested for technically as a small hat. I call it, it's, but it's Native American. It is called a throwing hawk because it makes sense. Whenever you're chopping a log, you're actually throwing it down into the law. Makes sense, don't it? So that's all I got to say. I say, I've been here and they broke four of my ribs. I can't prove nothing because they keep me in a single cell, a solo cell where I don't get access to a toilet that works or one phone call and I'm off the cameras. So that's all I got to say. Tired of coming.
Ronnie, I think you know the procedures, I'm not even going to say them this time.
My name is Ronnie Kirk from twenty-three, twenty-eight, North Zero here in Oklahoma City. I come to speak today on black history for Oklahoma, some of Oklahoma's black history. Years ago, I grew up in McAllister, Oklahoma. At one time, it had an internment, internment camp there. So I grew up around white kids, black kids, Indian kids, Mexicans. We didn't know to anything about this discrimination stuff. All our kids, we all got together well, we come out in life together. There was a Green Hall store, my mother made thirty-five dollars a week. Thanks for Green Hall, they just took her seems to, on a note, and gave my mom critic and that helped us get through life. There was a store at one time, they gave us free shoes out of a box once a year, but we had wet shoes till they got little holes in them, so that we were grateful for them. As I came, got bigger, older, I went to work for Oklahoma City Golf and Country Club. I was a good waiter, very good waiter. I fell, I worked at the, around the pool, I fell into the pool. They drained the water out of the pool. They fired me. I've been waiting on a lady, her name was, we called her Miss Emerson. She has silver hair, I came to country club every Sunday. She asked Roscoe, where's my waiter at? They said, we fired him because he fell in the pool. She said, that's ridiculous. Roscoe, get my waiter back. Go tell the head, the manager, I want my waiter back. That's ridiculous, firing him because he fell in the pool. And after that, a few years after that, that's when they had the riot at Spring Lake Park. White kids and black kids, we all just start going to Spring Lake Park, mainly blacks that just start going. There was a riot there because white kids came and jumped in front of the the black kids. That started the riot, riot that happened at Spring Lake Park. A few years after that, there was also when integration started at Midwest City Pool. The kids from Prince Hall, we had to start going down there in small groups in order to enjoy the pool. When we first started going, the black, white kids got out of the pool and throughout, as we kept going, they start coming, getting in the pool, and so we start tolerating each other and life went on. And I'd say, like I say, thanks for letting me come down and speak on black history for Oklahoma. I still plan on opening up a school to teach these kids on the northeast side of town some skills. That's still in my future for what I plan to do for Oklahoma City. I'd like to say thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, we previously voted to go in the executive session for two items. What we're going to do is go back there and go for item nine J as the council. We will then reconvene OCP, OCPPA specifically for one item, item C, that is an executive session item, and then we will come back here and adjourn both meetings. So we will return.
Mayor, can I point one thing out?
Sure.
In this report, this is the additional revenue, revenue enforcement program.
Where? The city manager report.
On the city manager reports. And I just think it's amazing that the city began pursuing revenue compliance in two thousand and one, so that's not very long ago. And we have collected twenty-four point three million in additional revenue as a result of those activities. And I just want to commend the staff for doing that. That's an amazing number. That's a lot of bus service or a lot of police officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.